Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Councilman Wu?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Here.
Mayor Racini?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Today I will ask Councilwoman Miles to please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Please stand if you're able. Right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
Thank you. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting. We encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a speaker card and provide that card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found outside the entrance to the city council chambers, I should say, at the rear of the city council chambers. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comment section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to submit comments in writing by 3:00 PM today. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comment section of the item. Presentations. First up, we have National Nurse Practitioner Week, November 10th through the 16th. And who do we have here for that? Please come on up. Tell us more. Welcome.
Thank you. Do you hear me well?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Maryam Gilreiz. I'm a certified nurse practitioner in family and psychiatry. Thank you for allowing me to be here tonight, and thank you for this recognition. As nurse practitioners, we promote health care, bridge the gap in health care by providing care to the vulnerable population. We diagnose and treat patients and improve health outcomes. Some of us work in different settings, in hospitals, in outpatient clinics, and some of us specialize, like myself. It's been an honor working as a nurse practitioner in different communities. On behalf of our profession, I'm honored to be accepting this recognition tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and we appreciate you. We have a proclamation here that we'd like to provide to you. If you wouldn't mind coming up and taking a photo with us?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to stay here?
Thank you.
Next up, we have Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. Councilwoman Miles, would you lead us off on that?
Thank you. I would like to introduce Laura Young, who is the district manager for our Orange County Mosquito and Vector District Control. So, welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for allowing me some time today at your council meeting. So every year, the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District tasks our cities that we work with and represent to help us engage our community in mosquito awareness. And we found that having a little healthy competition helps every one of our city just do a little bit harder and work and increase that awareness. So today, I did want to recognize the city of Villa Park. We recognize them for their outstanding efforts, the city staff, and trustee Miles, who sits on our board, above and beyond to help educate the residents and make them aware of the impacts mosquitoes can have on their, not only their quality of life, but the diseases they can carry. So with that, I wanted to award you the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control 2024 Award for Most Recognized Small City in Orange County.
Thank you.[322.62][322.62](applause) Before, I would like to say that also the city staff were very instrumental in making sure that we won, and healthy competition's putting it lightly, because in the boardroom it gets pretty cutthroat, but also want to make sure that city staff gets put in this picture as well.
A couple of them had to leave for other family emergencies or family things, but we have Justin and Ashley will be there. They did a lot of social media.
Yes.
So they'll be.
Okay.
I'll take your picture. Justin, go up.
I will say that Peggy Wong from Yorba Linda actually referenced that Yorba Linda lost, and she was really ticked off. So you got that going for you, so, yeah.
So it's 2025.
A little trash talking.[374.00][374.00](laughter)[375.00][375.00](applause)
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next up, Orange County Sheriff's Department. Captain Patella, welcome, sir.[386.00][386.00](laughter)
Good evening. Once again, another fairly good month in Villa Park. Two hundred and fifteen calls for service, about a fifty-fifty split as far as assigned versus observed. Very minimal crimes against property, zero crimes against persons, no assaults, no batteries. The crimes against property, actually, it was really limited to one event, which resulted in two catalytic converter thefts, but that was basically one incident. We think it's the same crew working that, so my investigators are working that behind the scenes. No vehicle burglaries, no residential burglaries, no stolen vehicles. The main things were, we had a couple of other grand thefts, which were unattended property, unattended e-bikes, and then another petty theft, which was an unlocked vehicle with stuff in plain sight. So people, we really need to secure our things. Again, the fraud and identity theft still is a problem, but that only can be cured by education. It really knows no boundaries, so there's nothing we can do to prevent that other than to educate people to really look out for themselves. As far as the catalytic converter stuff, just know what type of vehicle you have, know if it's prone to that type of crime, if people like to get the catalytic converters off your vehicle, and the best thing we could do is get that thing off of the street. At least get it into your driveway, if you can get it into the garage, but if it's parked on the street, it's going to be a target. Mainly Toyota Priuses, but there are a couple of other ones that are kind of in that realm. So the guys are doing great work. We own zero traffic, injury traffic accidents. The two non-injury traffic accidents, we're basically distracted driving, no speed-related stuff, which is what I'm always looking for. And our suspicious activity calls went up by, from eleven to twenty-one. They all ended up being nothing, but people are calling when they see something, so that's all I can ask. So I'm open for any questions.
Any questions? Outstanding work. Thank you. We appreciate you and the deputies. Chief Weeden-Soler, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council. Thank you for the opportunity to stand before you here tonight. Since our last council meeting, September 24th, we had ninety-eight units dispatched to thirty-nine incidents within the city of Villa Park. This month, our safety message would be, as we hit the height of the wildfire season in the southern part of the state, we want to remind residents to visit ocfa.org/ RSG. The RSG is for Ready, Set, Go. Homes survive wildfires because of vegetation management and home hardening. No matter how much you can afford to spend, there are things you can do right now to make your home less vulnerable to wildfire. Vegetation management is the control of plant material to prevent wildfire spread or house-to-house ignition. This includes removing dead or dying plants, pruning and thinning trees and shrubs, and replacing fire-prone plants with fire-resistant and drought-tolerant plants. There are several more points on here, but I trust that everyone can go to ocfa.org to get more information. Really, we're looking at hardening your home within the first hundred feet of the structure from the house to your property line. And one other point I want to drive home is that we have a, if you go to the website, there's a phone number there, and there's a live voice that'll answer anyone that calls from the city, and we'll send one of our inspectors out at no charge to any of the residents that have concerns. If they're in that wild interface area, they'll come out, they'll do an inspection, and offer some ways to harden your home, you know, and be there with you as you're going through this and preparing your home. One other thing, a couple of points. I've done a couple of town halls in other cities in the last, over the last month, and we talk about having a go-bag. We speak about having a go-bag. One thing I'd recommend, and there was one resident of another city that I really liked, I was impressed. She used her phone and she made up, she had three different lists. She had a fifteen-minute list, a thirty-minute list, and a sixty-minute list, and there were things that she could reasonably pack into her car in those timeframes, and she practiced them. So that one stuck with me, and I recommend that to anyone. It's real easy to talk about being ready, but when you actually have to go through and you get an evacuation warning or an order to go through and try to figure out at that point what you want to take with you, it's a little too late. You'll just be running around frantically, I think. So I recommend everyone to take the time to make a list for themselves and really be intentional about it. That's all I have unless there's any questions.
Colleagues? Outstanding advice.
And I just want to also say thank you for participation in the open house last month. That was a very successful open house at Station 23. Thank you.
Public comments are up next. At this time, we will review comments from the members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We will also be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Benedict, our first speaker.
Welcome, Mr. Benedict.
Thank you, mayor and city council members. My name is Jeff Benedict. I suppose I say my address, right? My address is eighty-two seventy-six Golden Poppy Road in Riverside. I'm here today on behalf of my fellow union musicians from the American Federation of Musicians Local Seven of Orange County in Long Beach. If you don't know us, we would like to introduce ourselves to you. We are over nine hundred strong. We work in the entertainment industry, and we live in your community. We are the ones you will see at concerts, restaurants, coffee houses, and private parties. We come today not only to introduce ourselves, but also to remind you that we are workers. We deserve the dignity of a fair wage, proper working conditions, and respect for our art. Spending on the arts accounts for eight percent of California's gross domestic product, which is more than all the trade unions combined. However, despite this significant number, we are still, for the most part, treated as outsiders when it comes to the mainstream economy. When the pandemic hit, it brought into sharp and painful focus the fact that we are treated as marginal workers. Many of my fellow musicians could not collect unemployment since they were not considered employees. We are classified, correctly or not, as independent contractors. We could not by law participate in the social safety net. We have no unemployment insurance. We do not have workers' comp nor employee-paid social security. We are treated, really, as second-class citizens by our own government. We are asking you today to help us reverse this trend. When your city holds events where musicians are hired, we ask that you hire union musicians, or at least pay a prevailing wage. With union contracts, the workers would participate in the musicians' pension fund, which provides retirement benefits. They would also be able to make a living wage and would no longer be marginalized. We ask that you work with us to create a prevailing wage policy for your city. We have some materials for your review. We thank you for your time and look forward to working with you.
Thank you for your comments, sir. Appreciate it.
Good evening, mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and city council members. My name is Edmund Velasco. I am the president of the Orange County Musicians Union of, well, not only Orange County, but Long Beach as well now. Just so you know, I spent twenty-eight years playing at the happiest place on earth, a place you guys probably know, and I never thought I'd ever become a representative for musicians, but I've spent my life alongside my fellow musicians and see, you know, how hard it is to actually make a living, because most people don't think that musicians are workers. But we are. Our work is just like, you know, anybody else who goes to work, except our work clothes are not a uniform. It's usually a tuxedo or some other kind of outfit. We represent musicians from Pacific Symphony to Disneyland, to Long Beach Symphony, to South Coast Symphony, and a whole bunch of freelancers that really, we need to, as a community, support. So we do have some materials. I included my card. I looked them with the, they have them up there. Fantastic. But I just, I, please, my phone number's on there. We would love to work with you. Those musicians who do those kinds of, that kind of work for you guys, really, I know how much you enjoy it. We love performing, but again, it is still work, and we appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Velasco.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Please.
Is there actually a prevailing wage billlet, or whatever they call it, a DIR for performance artists?
No.
Oh, so you're asking for it to be created? Okay.
Yeah, and to just let you know that we are working with the city of Long Beach to create one. So this will be the first time in the United States where it will have happened. It has happened in Canada, in the, in Hamilton, or, not Hamilton.
Well, now I'm against it.
Toronto. I know. No, it is Hamilton. No, my wife is from Hamilton's.
Well, you know that.
Yeah, so. But thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your question.
Our next speaker is Kelly McBride.
Welcome, Mr. McBride.
Thank you for your time. I just want to provide a polite reminder to our constituents that we still have an active campaign for the next two weeks, and if you've already voted, please put a note on your door so that we don't have to bother you or leave more literature. I can assure you that we will all be glad on November 5th when the signs come down and this election is over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Martin Calais.
Calais, like the town in France, depending on where you are in the country, it gets its own.
Welcome and nice to meet you, sir.
Thank you. Well, they say speaking in public is more feared than death in America, and now that's striking home. So I am Martin Calais. I live at 17992 Altive Drive with my wife Jan. Jan's lived here since, God, nineteen sixty-four, and when we got married in nineteen ninety-one, we decided, unlike my family, which moved incessantly, we're going to raise our kids in one place so they could have their own friends from birth. So we've been in Villa Park since nineteen ninety-one. The oldest is thirty, the youngest is twenty-five. As I said to the mayor earlier, you know, it's just got to be something in the water here, because they're all doing really well. They're products of Villa Park High School and started off at Oak Ridge Private School. But again, thank you for letting me speak to you today. I principally came to thank Steve and Ashley and Justin and Noah for helping me work through a difficult situation with an inconsiderate neighbor. Don't want to go over all the details, but about three years ago, they moved, we live at the end of the cul-de-sac, so it's the bottom of the jar, and everything collects there. So the people that live further down the street are less impacted, and our immediate neighbors want to say something and would say something, and I've wanted to say something for three years, but they didn't want to feel the fallout from opening their mouth. So a couple of years ago, I called the city, and they said, "Look, there's a seventy-two-hour ordinance. If the man who lives in that house now apparently running a contractor's business out of his home, you know, leaves his trailers and his trucks parked in one place for seventy-two hours, that's, call the sheriff. They'll come and ticket him." Well, I didn't, because I didn't want any fallout. There was a day when he only had three kids. We were out in the street on a Saturday, and he lifts up his shirt, and he's got a pistol stuck in there gangster style, and I'm like, dude, you've got three kids under the age of five living at home. You do know most kids shoot themselves by finding daddy's gun, right? Like, this is not smart. So for me, that was also kind of a subtle form of intimidation. But a couple of weeks ago, I came in on a Tuesday to talk to Steve and Ashley. Justin greeted me, and they introduced me to Noah later, because my wife and I just realized we're not living in Villa Park. It's not the hidden jewel on Altive Drive at all. It's Sanford and Son's junkyard with trucks that drip oil on the asphalt and leave stains in front of my house. The truck is picked up by a worker who drives his own car and parks it across the street. It looks residential. I mean, it's listed as a residential parking-only area, but then he picks up the truck and the trailer, and he drives away from the day, for the day, and it's thirty-five feet long. I mean, he brings it back at the end of the day, and we look out our front door in the evening, there's the truck and trailer. And if it's not the truck and the trailer, it's one of the other Ford F-150 work trucks. So, you know, it's just, enough is enough, you know. It's like, I'm getting a little bit lost, but we're going through all the parking ordinances, and we found one that's kind of hard to enforce, but it says in a residential parking area that's so tagged, at no time for any reason will you park something that's not harmonious and complimentary to the residential nature of Villa Park. And it hasn't been residential on Altive Drive for three years. So right now, it's kind of a shell game with him tactically moving his vehicles every few hours, you know, every few days, so that I can't call the sheriff. And having then come in that Tuesday to talk to Steve and Justin and Ashley, and ultimately in speaking with Noah yesterday, you know, they advised me to just maintain a low profile. It's a process, and we've got the ball, and I trust them. They, you know, in case we're being monitored for quality purposes, these guys all deserve raises, you know?[1336.83][1336.83](laughter) But really, enough is enough. I mean, twice over the last three days, he's come banging on my door when he knows I'm home, and I really don't want to talk to him. I don't want to say something that would inflame the situation. I mean, most days, I'm half-wit trying to get promoted to full idiot. We're in our second careers, my wife and I, second half of our lives. We were doing something completely different, but now we teach children with moderate to severe autism in Orange Unified School District. I've been doing it for about twelve years. She's been doing it almost twenty. Takes a lot of patience. Most of the younger people that come into this that don't even have their own kids yet quit within three to five years. It's just, takes a lot of patience. But anyway, I wanted to thank the guys for taking care of me. It is a matter of finding a regulation that can actually stick, I suppose, if that's the right words, but they're working on it. And just wanted to thank you for letting me talk about this. I just want to get my Villa Park back. That's not the reason we live here, to watch trucks and trailers. Fridays, every so often, we've got twenty-five cars and trucks in, at the end of the cul-de-sac with guys sitting all over his front yard waiting for the neighbor to come home so he can hand out their cash at the front door. And then half of them peel away and leave smoke and burned rubber on the asphalt, you know. It's just like, eh, enough's enough, you know. So anyway, did I miss anything? So, okay. It's not pretty. I'm biting my tongue, and again, thank you for letting me present our situation. Thank you to the city for working on it, and I am very grateful for their guidance. So, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your words. Thank you for the appreciation of staff, and I assure you that the five council members up here will look into that, and I noticed the sheriff was taking some notes. So to the degree that if there's something that is out of line, it will be addressed.
So I really, haven't met Noah yet, but I took a great deal of time with him. I really appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments, and we take your concerns seriously. Appreciate Steve, any further? Okay. We're going to go ahead and move on to public hearings. Now we'll move on to, into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will now open the hearing. Steve, please give the staff report.
Thank you. This is the monthly item we have to allow us to have efficient and expedited meetings. We'd recommend approval.
Wasn't even long enough for me to take a drink.
(laughing) Sorry.
All good. Council members, I don't think you have any questions. Correct me if I'm wrong. Members of the public, any comments on this? Seeing none, hearing none, no cards submitted. Can I go ahead and have a motion on this?
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Everybody, please vote. This is a routine matter.
Passes by a five-zero vote.
Thank you. Next public hearing is item number two, error. Next hearing is tentative parcel map 2024-127 continuation. I will now open the hearing. Steve?
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, mayor. This item has been on the agenda for several months now. We're working with the owner, the applicant, I'm sorry, not the owner. You'll recall this was continued, several meetings. We are now continuing it from discussions with applicant till our meeting in November nineteenth. However, I would ask, because it's been noticed, if anyone showing, anyone in public has shown up to speak to it, we recommend that you take their hearing now. I, nobody submitted a card, but in case they did, we want to make sure they have an opportunity to speak.
Indeed. Members of the public, anybody interested in speaking on this item? Members of the council want to say anything on this?
No, we do need to take a, need to take a motion.
Entertain a motion for a continuance of this matter until next month, or at which time staff teams it, more appropriate.
I'll move it.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Next up is item, sorry, five oh, thank you. Next up is item number three. It is the conditional use permit 2024-01 at 18132 Pamela Place. I will now open the hearing. Steve?
Thank you. This, as you mentioned, is at 18132 Pamela Place, CUP. Justin Brenski will make a brief presentation and answer any questions for the council.
Nice tie, sir. Well done.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and members of the council. Before you is CUP 2024-01, and the application involves 18132 Pamela Place, which is currently approved of the two-story residence with an attached garage on a nineteen thousand nine hundred twenty-nine square foot lot, and the property is located in the E4 zoning district. The property owners and applicant are Mr. and Mrs. Rodriguez. The focus of the application is an attached one thousand five hundred and forty square foot garage addition and a new fifteen-foot, one-inch-tall garage door. The attached garage will result in six new parking spaces per personal vehicles and will be large enough to store a recreational vehicle. With the new and existing garage, the property will have nine garage spaces total. The proposed garage addition measures seventy-one feet deep by twenty-three feet in width. There are no variance requests as part of this application. Per the Villa Park Municipal Code, Section 23-6.7, the maximum allowable height for garage doors is eight feet, one inch, and the maximum allowable garage spaces on a residential lot is four. Five or more spaces and garage doors taller than eight feet, one inch are only permitted with an approved conditional use permit. The applicants justify their application because a large recreational vehicle requires substantial garage clearance and depth. Absent the CUP application, it would be, it would be impossible to park a recreational vehicle inside of a covered space within the city code. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, public hearing notices for the CUP requests were mailed and posted at least ten calendar days prior to this public hearing, and we also published them in the Orange City News. To date, we've received a supplemental letter of justification and plans for the additions. I have also received four letters of support from neighbors and no letters of opposition. After careful consideration of the zoning code and the neighborhood, city staff recommend approval of the application for the following reasons. First, the CUP request is consistent with land use patterns in the E4 zone, which consists of large lots with large single-family homes and attached garages. Two, there are no negative privacy or visual impacts upon the neighbors. And finally, there are no environmental concerns with the conditional use permit request. This concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer questions.
Colleagues, questions? Members of the public want to speak on this? I know the applicant's right here.
No.
Okay.
No app.
I personally will just comment on it. I think it's going to be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. to the neighborhood. The house is actually very similar as it currently sits to a house up on Rosnow. The Ferris residents, who went through the same process, had a very similar side yard. And I thought the plans were very tasteful and they've gone about doing it the right way. They've talked to their neighbors, they've gained support, they've been forthright and transparent. So I, for one, will be supporting this and I'd be happy to make the motion on it.
I'd like to comment.
Please.
So I too, I went to the home, met the applicants and Yorvalinda's losing a family, so you can tell Peggy. Anyways, I agree. I think applicants did everything correct and so much so that when I pulled up to go visit the home, you know, I think we all can agree that I'm probably the one that is the least trusting and intent is always a huge deal for me, no surprise. But when I drove up and I saw their RV parked out front and I thought, okay, well, that's pretty good. I guess, yeah, they really are seriously building an RV garage and not something else. So I really appreciated all the efforts that they went to, doing it correctly from the point of view of notifying councils and neighbor and I'm working with the city and I think it's gonna be a lovely home. They're not invading any of the setbacks, which I think is fantastic. And they just want to be able to move to a better city than Yorvalinda and I'm welcoming them with full arms and I support them 100%.
Not a word, Todd. Not a word.
Oh, you can tell Peggy everything.
And for the record, I did not meet with the applicants. I just stalked their home at night. So I apologize if you saw a flashlight around nine o'clock on Sunday. Okay.
Except there's no other comments. I'm happy to make the motion to approve.
Okay.
And I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second. Everybody, please vote.
Passes by a 5-0 vote.
Congratulations. Good luck. Good luck with your remodel. Start drinking now. I'm sorry. Start counseling now. Start counseling now. That's it.
You're all invited out.
Thank you. We will take you up on that. Consent calendar. Next up, items four and five. We will now consider our consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items four through five that you'd like to remove from the calendar? Okay. Any members of the public want to remove anything?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve items four and five?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion. I have a second. Everyone, please vote.
Passes 5-0.
All right. Moving on to new business, item six. Our first item of new business is regarding city hall plumbing repairs. Steve?
Thank you. For the last three weeks, unfortunately, we've had some problems with our plumbing here, the sewers, basically, for our restrooms. So those of you who've visited city hall have experienced that they've been shut down. We've had some backups that were pretty unpleasant. With that in mind, we've had to literally, because people continued to use it, we had to lock them down at night because people were using them off hours. It did create a real problem, health hazard, and it was a serious backflow of raw sewage. So we had plumbers out and they reamed it three or four times, three different days. We all thought it was fixed and then it backed up again. So eventually, we had it scoped, a full length of it scoped. They found out that we had a break in the pipe and that pipe was directly underneath our computer room, which has all our servers and all of our wiring, et cetera. So our options, and it's probably about five or six feet of cement that they would have to dig down to fix. So they're able to go at it from our outside trap and they can basically coat the inside of the pipe and recreate it. So repipe it from the inside, which is a much less expensive, but still very expensive proposition. So very candidly, in the first three weeks, we spent about pretty close to $4,300 in, you know, getting it done and scoping it, et cetera. The bid came in around $19,000. So we went ahead and did it because it's absolutely impossible to have, and inappropriate to have a building that doesn't have a working sewer and restrooms. Library has been closed as a result, on and off for the last three weeks, because they're not allowed to be open without a restroom. Anyway, so we got it fixed and we all sort of like dared each other to use it because we didn't trust it. And lo and behold, after we had it repiped on Saturday, it backfilled again. So this morning, or yesterday morning, we had them and the sewer line goes actually all the way out behind Ralph's. So we had to have that all completely done. They did find another problem, which they were able to clean out. But in the interest of safety, health, and just expediency, I went ahead and authorized to do that. I talked to Todd and he says, and it's an emergency health issue, we need to take care of it. So I'm asking for ratification of the actions I took. It's probably gonna be around $25,000. Unfortunately, with the weekend, this, I wrote this before, we had our last expense over the weekend, so it might be, I'm gonna say, I have to amend that. I'm gonna say, we're gonna spend probably up to close to $30,000 because of the reaming and the amount of work they've had to do. If you know what they do, they run a camera and they run, it's almost 30, 50 feet. And repiping it is quite an adventure. But anyway, the recommended action is to authorize us to pay the $25,000 and again, I'm gonna have to amend that to 30 because of actions over the weekend, just to be cautious. I don't want to have to come back. But it's to ratify actions we've taken. We did use, we believe, we took a good cautious course of action. We did jump into repiping right away. We did what was appropriate. But again, it's not a very pleasant experience when you have that kind of thing happening. We've had to have the restrooms cleaned, sanitized multiple times after each time it was cleaned and fixed. And staff have sort of taken turns going over to Rockwell's to use the restroom. Anyway, so unfortunately, the library's had to cancel children's story hour and things like that have had to be canceled. So, you know, it isn't something we could do long term. So in lieu of waiting till October 22nd today, what I did is I went ahead and did it and I would ask for your approval or ratification that we go ahead and allow us to pay for the repairs that we need to take.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions?
I have a question. Is there no responsibility borne to, say, Ralph's or any of the other?
It's a main line that runs behind us. So we have responsibility for main lines, the laterals, they have responsibility to. So if the pipe, it's the main line that runs. So if it's the pipe that connects, that's a lateral. And so they're responsible. But there, you know, they had a problem, but they cleaned it out and, you know, who knows where it ended, but it ended up in our main line. So we've got responsibility. So unfortunately, I can't ask them to pay for anything that isn't theirs.
So what you're saying is their plumber moved it to our, their plumber moved it to our area?
Well, I don't know. I don't, we have various theories.
We're happy that you got the problem solved. Councilman Pitts, you had a question?
Steve, the fix that they put in, the insert that they put in there, how long is that? Is that permanent?
It has a 50-year life expectancy.
Wow.
I won't be around to check it then, but I hope that it's still working.
Hope not.
And the reality is, we have basically piping that's cast iron piping, which they don't even allow in new buildings anymore. This was built in a long time ago. So we did half of the piping that we needed to do because that's where the problem is identified. There is a potential that we could eventually have, we have the same kind of piping going the other direction. But again, that was my question, is how long is this gonna last? Do I get like a month warranty or something after a $20,000 expense? They said, no, you have a 50-year warranty. So I'm okay with that. And if you want to check it, then you're free to. Take your word for it. But anyway, yes, it is, it is, what they do is they actually line it and it's, they send, they do a piping through it. It's pretty crazy what they do and not work I'd ever want to enjoy.
No, I was just curious if it was a much larger project coming down the road as a result of this being a temporary fix.
No, it's very similar to what people do in their houses. They do, you know, you don't repipe your whole house if you have under, that's one of the ways to do it. You can either do it in your attic or repipe it underneath if you've done underground piping. Typically, what they'll do is they repipe it within the existing pipe so they don't have to, it's like re-core it. And that's what they've done here.
Thank you. Councilman Will?
Steve, you mentioned about, by the time you wrote this, was $25,000, but over the weekend, there's an increased $5,000. I'm just curious, can we just vote?
I'd like to ask, let we amend the recommended action to $30,000 so that we ratify up to 30 because I don't want to, you know, I want to be able to pay their bills. These people did their work, which is interesting too. We did, we were very careful. We didn't call them on it on an emergency basis because that would have been another $1,500 expense. So we tried to do it in a very smart way, but it's very expensive to do the kind of work and it's very, it's a lot of effort on that. But they had teams of people out there. If you were over the weekend, you probably saw them working, digging up and having to get to the joints. It's really a lot of work.
So in other ways, we are voting for $30,000.
I would ask for 30. I mean, we haven't received the bill for what they did this weekend, but I'm, if it's anything comparable to what we just spent, I'm saying to be on a safe side. I obviously only can spend what we've done, but I think it's under that amount.
Yeah, that would be my recommendation to make sure we approve 30 instead of 25.
Just before we entertain motions, any further comments on the diocesan?
I have a question. So they work now? The toilets?
Fingers crossed.
Restrooms are good to go.
I left for the weekend and I thought it was great and everyone with staff was like, oh, this is great. And then I got a text, I got a text on Saturday saying, guess what? And I think the mayor was in over the weekend and he said, did you know that it's not working?
What I mean, yesterday, today, like they are working?
They finished, they finished the work this morning. So, because they have to, they had to remount the commode because they have to take the commode up and it's a lot of, you know, stuff they do. But in essence, we believe it's working and that's, I guess, the best answer I can give.
Maybe we should go try it real fast before we agree to pay them.
If you want to do it, go for it.
I'm just saying.
You're just troubleshooting tonight, aren't you?
It worked. Mike has guaranteed us two weeks. That's why Mike's joking. He said it's gonna work for another two weeks. So probably.
Thank you. Any members of the public want to comment on this item? All right. I'll entertain a motion now for the $30,000 amount.
We'll move it.
Okay. All right. Motion and a second. Everybody, please vote.
Passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank, I'd like to say thank you to staff for putting up with a unfortunate and somewhat messy situation.
I've actually started trying to buy something every time I go to Rockwell's now because we just go, I feel guilty walking in, using their restroom and walking out. So I try and buy a cookie or something.
Thank you, Billy. All right. Next up, item seven of new business. Our next item of new business is regarding the automated license plate recognition technology bid results. Steve, would you please give the staff?
Thank you. You'll recall that several months ago, the city council authorized to go out to bid for automated license plate readers, which are basically fixed base cameras that can monitor license plates coming and going and it's used by law enforcement as a tool to help them resolve crimes and that thing. So I'll let, Ashley has taken the lead for the project, so I'll let her do a presentation and kind of let you know where we are and how we got here. And then, this has been a longstanding effort we've gone through. And then we do have a number of public speakers and some letters, emails that we received that I would like to record for the record.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm gonna give a brief presentation on this item and kind of the history and background as well so we can get up to speed. So for background, in general, ALPRs are automated license plate recognition cameras were authorized by California Senate Bill 1330 in May 2012. They are currently utilized by law enforcement to identify stolen vehicles, stolen license plates, investigative leads, dangerous or missing persons. And like Steve said, they're mounted as a fixed item in a city or an intersection and then they scan license plates as they come through. They're currently used in Orange County by various cities and they're also supported by the OC Sheriff's Department. As far as the timeline for our city, in October 2023, we had our first license plate reader town hall, which was presented by the Sheriff's Department. They presented what license plate readers are, gave a background and kind of gained a pulse on what residents were feeling on the issue. We then went back for another meeting in January 2024. And then from there, the item went to our law enforcement advisory committee, which meets quarterly, I believe, and that was the January 2024 meeting for them. They decided unanimously to move forward with the process and so then the item came to city council in February. In February, as you'll probably recall since you voted on it, it was a 5-0 vote for moving forward with an RFP or request for proposals. And so from there, staff worked with the Sheriff's Department to develop an RFP, the site locations, technical specifications, and then we went out to bid. In July 2024, we received the results of that bid. It was six vendors in total that responded by the deadline. And then we kind of compiled that information, made assessments, and presented it to LEAC at their September meeting. They came back in the October meeting and made their decisions in terms of what they would want to recommend to council. And so I will get to that in the next slide. As far as the bid results, this is just an abbreviated summary. If you go to attachment one of the item, you have the full summary of everything. But there are six vendors, so it was Blue Violet, Cell Plan Technology, IP, Flock Safety, Portola, and Vigilant. Line one shows the cameras they proposed. Line two is which camera provider they use. And then three is power source. And lastly, for a three-year term, that's the total cost for each of those vendors. As far as LEAC's recommendation, they all unanimously decided to recommend implementation of license plate readers for Villa Park and then they selected their top two vendors for city council consideration. So number one would be Flock Safety at approximately $175,000 for the three years and number two would be IP at approximately $114,000. And these selections were made on factors including cost, experience, and also technical specifications. And lastly, based on LEAC recommendations, staff is recommending that the city council number one, select a vendor, and two, direct staff to negotiate a contract, which we would bring back for council approval at a future meeting. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, let me know.
Thank you.
Do you want to? Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, sir.
I just want to make a comment from the standpoint that I have done business with these companies in the past and I reached out to our city attorney to see if I needed to recuse myself from this vote. And so he indicated I did not based on the circumstances, my relationships with those two, with two or three of these companies. So just wanted to bring that up in advance.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Do you want to go through the public comments?
Please.
We received, and I shared with you, a number of emails over the last two, couple days. The, I can read them if you want, or I could just indicate, there were three supportive. One from John Whitman, one from Eric Reynolds, and one from Mike Felix, who all supported the acquisition and movement forward on license plate readers, and one in opposition from Deanna Fastinelli. Those are, I believe, in the, were sent to you and copies of them, but again, if you need to, I can read them aloud. But again, three in support and one in opposition. We also have a number of speakers that, or two speakers at least, that have submitted cards and would like to speak this evening.
Okay. Let's go ahead and have the members of the public speak and then we'll have council comments after that.
Okay. Sergio Stone.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, Mr. Frank, I would like to speak against this proposition that has been approved by the council. There is really no data, if you look at, that shows that this technology prevents or deters crime, especially in small cities like ours, that as we just heard the sheriff tell us, it's a very safe city. Why do we need all this technology that is unproven? If you look at trying to find data, you find a lot of explanations and a lot of situations in which they say, we catch more robbers, we have more individual plates found. What, I don't know where it is of any value. Are these people prosecuted? Are these people in jail? Does it matter if we know their license plates? If you walk in the streets and see that in Villa Park, you see that a large number of houses have all kind of security. They have lights and alarms. You cannot walk without being videotaped from every angle in the city. And this in a city that has almost no crime, thanks God. So since you, there is another point that it makes a lot of mistakes. 90% accuracy is what the vendors tell you, 90%. So let's take it as true. It takes 2,000 photos per It takes two thousand photos per minute, that's two hundred errors. What could be very significant for the person. So I would like to request, since obviously it's going to be approved, that the city puts together a study after perhaps one or two years and see how much more crime we have got in our hand with the technology. And if not, not to continue a technology just because it's there. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Next up, Steve.
Next speaker is John Cohen.
Welcome, John.
One of the things, we're blessed with an exceptionally good crime rate here. I mean, so low, I mean, almost nonexistent this week or this month. Who knows what will happen next month. But if you look over time, it's been exceptionally good. And we are two, three, four, five times better than our neighboring cities. Which, to me, it raised the question, which I asked at LeAC just the most recent meeting. What, you know, what are we going to get? We're going to spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over three years. What does success look like? What will we get? What's the return on this? And some of the law enforcement professionals that were there, they said, you know, hey, this is going to help us prosecute crimes. And, you know, there is a deterrent, you know, potential for deterrence. But the reality was, you can't tell really upfront until you actually go through it to see what this does for it. And I kind of hate to spend a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to find it out. But I think, you know, we need to, you know, that says if you go forward with it, we're going to have to monitor it to say, hey, how do we measure the success of this? The other item which is still of concern to me is privacy. And I know some of the members have heard me talk about this for the last year. But I know the courts have ruled that we have no expectation of privacy in public setting. Get that? Not, you know, that's not the thing. But the state legislature, when they rewrote parts of the law back in 2016, they spent pages on pages talking about breaches and privacy and auditing of this to make sure that the information that is obtained is used correctly. And I've been in the data industry for forty years. And it is a common problem that data can be breached. Anonymous data with a lot of brute force and other data can be brought. And personal information can be tied to that license plate. That can happen. Will it happen? I don't think we, you know, I can't say that that's going to happen, but it's possible. There's also a scale of this. I mean, in my estimation, based on where the cameras are going to be located, on what streets and the number of that, we're probably going to generate maybe a million images a month. And depending on the deletion period, we could be sitting with four, five, eight million images sitting in this database. And ninety-nine, over ninety-nine percent of that are going to be of just the residents going about their daily lives, going to school, going to Ralph's and so forth. So it seems to be a significant disruption, especially when we have such a low crime rate. Is it a great tool? I, you know, I've seen the statistics that in other cities, it does work well. So I'm not saying that this is a bad system. I'm just saying for Villa Park, is this the right time to be doing that? If the, I do have a suggestion I'd like to make to the council. If you go ahead with it, I'd like you to, in addition to saying to them, go ahead and negotiate the contract, I'd like to suggest perhaps adding an addendum to that. And that addendum would be requiring a quarterly report on a calendar basis from both the vendor and the Sheriff's Department, giving us the information so we can measure. You know, let's set up the, let's set up the rules for figuring out whether this is working ahead of time rather than trying to figure it out later on. And that information would be things like, in the last quarter, how many images are in the database? How many were added this last quarter? How many were deleted? And when I say deleted, you know, erased, not put into a backup file which still can be accessed. That, that report would also say, what is the current deletion schedule? Is it sixty days? Like the state legislature restricts the highway patrol to a sixty-day deletion schedule in the interest of privacy. So what is that? So we know what that is. How many images were not captured because of obscured license plates or missing license plates? You know, that'll give us an efficiency ratio. How many inquiries from the Sheriff's Department by investigators were done? And how many images were pulled for that? And then over time of those inquiries, how many arrests were made? How many convictions? And were there materials recovered from robberies or cars and so forth? Again, another measurement to see how this is working. How many inquiries were done by other law enforcement agencies, you know, Orange or whatever? How many images did they pull? How many images and queries were done for public service agencies who do have the right to do that? And then finally, an affirmation that no images or queries made of the database by organizations outside of California, which is the state, which is in the state law. I think if we do that, we're going to set us, set us up to be able to measure this correctly over time and say, yes, this did work. No, it didn't. You know, do we, do we re-up, you know, for another hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars or not? It'll also provide transparency to, you know, show that we're aware of the privacy concerns of, you know, all these images that are being captured. And one of the things in the Flock bid, they're not only picking up license plates, they're picking up make, model and color of the car. So it's, you know, it's, it's just, you know, kind of creeping along. It's just another big database that is doing this. So one last item, I think, which would be helpful, would be also asking the Sheriff's Department to share their annual audit of the entire license plate reader program so that, again, you have the transparency of what's going on and if there's been any misuse of the system.
Thank you. Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up?
Our next speaker is Fred Fastinelli.
Welcome, Fred.
Thank you. Counsel, Mayor, Captain. Hope I'm not giving away any secrets today. But for those of you who don't know what I do for a living, I represent the people he arrests. The sheriff arrests people, I defend them. License plate readers have been around for years. And I have had a bunch of cases with them. I've seen the data that you get from them. And it's minimal. We've all seen now Todd Spitzer prosecuting people for coming down from Los Angeles, these gangs doing home invasion robberies. And they've made the news and the sheriff has arrested them and task force and Todd Spitzer's prosecuted them. You know how many of those cases had to do with license plate readers? Zero. None. Why do I know that? Because I have had at least seven of those cases. I represent these people. And I'm telling you, license plate readers don't do that job. License plate readers are really great for finding out where someone is. So if you have a license plate, like my old sunbird when I was eighteen, one ARH three eighty was the license plate number. You want to know where I was? Type it in. You'll see I went down to San Diego. The license plate reading cameras are all up and down the five. They're all in orange. They'll tell you where a car has been. They won't tell you who's driving it. They don't tell you who's in it. They don't even get a picture of the driver. They tell you, they do exactly what they say they do. They read the license plate. Now, the new technology, all these people who've been doing those home invasion robberies, the gangs, the groups, they're all being caught by what they call geo fencing. And geo fencing is pretty simplistic. Everywhere we go, we have your cell phone. Even if you don't hook into the network that's here, it sends you a ping and you register with it. Even though you're not logged into it, it still knows where you are. And all they do is they take a photograph or a geo fence before the event occurred, say at eleven o'clock. The home invasion robbery happened at twelve, so they do a geo fence at twelve. And then they do one at one o'clock. And then they go, okay, who was here at twelve? Who was here at one? Who was here at there? And they run the spreadsheet and they look at the duplicates and they, who left? And they look through those. And that's how all of these home invasion guys, they've all been caught. They find the number, they track the number down, even if it's a burner phone. They called their girlfriend, they called their mama. They went home and they pinged on their own server at home with their burner. And that's where they get the information. So to think you're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars or a hundred and, thank you, a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over three years, it's a waste. If you know who you're looking for, it's great. Matter of fact, I just subpoenaed information the other day because we know the car we're looking for. We want to know where that car went over a period of time. And they're great for that. But if you want to know, you know, who doesn't belong in a city at a particular time, that doesn't tell you what it is. What it tells you, what it tells you, what you want to know, is all the data that's being collected every second of every hour of every day. So that is how the crime is being solved, not with license plate readers. They build the crime. Once you find out who you're looking for, you might be able to track them if everything is in place. But it's spotty. The technology is in the phone and law enforcement is using it on a daily basis. And how do I know that? Because once again, I'm defending the bad guys. So take it from the guy who defends the bad guys, who sees the end results. License plate readers are not the answer. They have other technologies which we don't have to pay for and we don't need. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Yes, Donna Buxton.
Thank you, Donna. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor Rossini, City Council, city staff. I apologize, I'm literally just into town. We are racing here. I've been managing an event for a few days. But I did want to be sure to weigh in on this issue. We've always enjoyed a very high safety level in our city. And I think that the license plate readers are becoming a bit of a norm. And the criminals are sophisticated enough to know who does and who does not have these systems. And I think that the exposure for us by not having it far, you know, outweighs, you know, that that's a far greater risk to us than, you know, than to not have it. So I think we benefit a lot more by just having that protection that it's in place instead of the risk that they would know that we don't have that. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Any further comments?
That's the last who submitted any cards, so.
Okay. I will now open it for comments from my colleagues.
One wonder if we shouldn't read the comments presented via email.
Okay. That's a good suggestion.
Do you want me to read them or just?
Please, if you wouldn't mind.
You got nothing before. Hi, Steve. Hope you're doing well. Like to weigh in discussion of LPRs. Please add this to any public comments related to this item. LPR is a valuable tool for today's modern law enforcement. It provides a great tool for law enforcement to garner information on who is going through our city. This information that will be crucial in solving and providing leads for crime occurring in Villa Park. Imagine this, providing the necessary real-time information to catch a sex-offending perpetrator who just kidnapped a child or someone the victim of a home inva, or someone the victim of a home invasion. It could also help provide patterns to solve rashes of crime such as car burglaries or thefts of catalytic converters. One could argue that LPRs are an invasion of privacy, but in today's society of smartphones, Ring cameras and Alexa, we should be aware this is a daily thing. Information from LPRs will be protected by law enforcement to prevent fraudulent or nefarious use. Additionally, the city of Orange installed LPRs early this year. And since we all drive through Orange to get home, we most likely have already had our license plate read by LPRs. Did it really affect you? There really isn't a compelling reason to at least try LPRs. There isn't a compelling reason to at least try LPRs on a trial basis. Thanks, Steve John Whitman on Prado Woods Drive. Secondly, this is, I'm in favor of LPR system of Villa Park. The system aids the Sheriff's Department in its investigations by connecting data from multiple points to narrow in on suspects involved in crimes. Villa Park crime is very low. The system keeps the city up to date using the latest technology in aiding the capture of suspects committing crimes in our neighborhood and others. If the system is used in another city in our area, it is quite possible it would prevent crime in our neighborhood. The Big Brother aspect that some people, along with myself, are afraid of is very minimal. They capture license plates time and place. The city has many vehicles, i.e. Teslas, that capture much more of the area. Ring cameras do the same. These systems are not monitored by any government, officials of government. The system would be a huge improvement if a larger incident occurred in the city. Eric Reynolds. Steve, I understand license plate readers are on the agenda council night. I wanted to voice my opinion in favor. LPR is a valuable law enforcement tool and significant step in the fight against crime and keeping our Villa Park citizens safe. I understand people's concerns about privacy we gave up a long time ago with computers in our cars, Amazon and Alexa devices in our homes and Apple Androids watches and devices in our homes. We need to weigh the benefits of LPRs versus the privacy concerns. What if a child was kidnapped, one of our banks was robbed, the pharmacy burglarized again, a home invasion robbery? LPR has created an immediate lead for our officers to pursue. Villa Park residents already involved with LPRs and driving through the city of Orange. Orange adopted them earlier this year. At worst, let's try it on a temporary basis. I think the city will find the benefits far outweigh any concerns. Mike Felix, Villa Park. Lastly, Mayor Rossini and council members, the issue of license plate readers is not a new one to the city. The item was discussed and researched extensively in 2014 with the council staff and community rejecting it for many reasons. Privacy, misuse of data, financial costs, and the fact it's not a crime prevention tool are a few reasons for rejection. Villa Park is fortunate to have an extremely low crime rate. To have the residents' constant movement being captured is not going to lower the crime rate anymore. The surveillance of the public is not a necessary tool in crime prevention. It is invasive to our private life and one that will instill discomfort to many residents. The information collected in public is public and with proper authority can be requested in civil matters as well as criminal matters. Tracking our residents' movements is intrusive. The argument that we are always tracked through our phones, cameras, et cetera, does not give rise to the city of Villa Park participating and contributing to additional government interference. The cost for LPRs has more than doubled since this was first considered by council members in 2014. We could not afford it back then and we still cannot afford it. It's an unnecessary electronic feature. Our cost for public safety in Orange County Sheriff is the number one item in our budget and they do a great job. There is no reason to burden our finances with this extraordinary cost that will provide no benefit to the residents of Villa Park. I encourage you to follow in the footsteps of past councils in making prudent decisions for the city which has afforded our residents a spectacular place to live in addition to not allowing more government interference. A no vote should at least be cast by each and every one of you on this issue. Best, Deanna Fastinelli, Villa Park. Those are the four.
Thank you. Council members? Open it up for comments from you. Please, go ahead.
Couple of things that bother me about Flock's proposal. They indicated that payment was prepayment in full. So if that's the case, what leverage do we have to complete the installation and so forth? If we're paying them all the money upfront? And does that include prepayment of the three years or is it just the first year and the installation?
Let me answer that as best I can. That's their bid. We have, we have not finalized or even responded to their bids as far as the negotiation. There are several items in each of their bids that were submitted that we would take exception to. I'm not going to prepay on something because exactly that, that's, you know, that's a leverage issue that we lose. But that's a negotiable item and that's candidly why we have two items that, two companies that we recommended. Because if somebody has a deal breaker in one of them that we don't want, we have the ability to start negotiating with a second without having to wait for the next council meeting. So that is an item. We have several items in there. There's a termination clause in there that I really am opposed to.
There's a termination clause in there that I really am opposed to. There's a question of determination of fixed posts versus them installing. If we don't agree to them installing certain posts or whatever. There's a couple of issues there that we will have to address. And that's why the recommendation before you is to select a firm and allow us to go forward and answer, get some answers to those questions. I don't support a prepayment and that wouldn't be something that I would bring to the council. But again, I haven't negotiated with them at this point, so I don't know. That's just simply what they responded to our bids in middle.
Well, neither, neither one of the vendors also had a termination clause whereby if we didn't, if we couldn't budget for this for next year, we couldn't terminate the agreement.
Well, they have, by mutual agreement, and I'm candidly, I'm not excited about a mutual agreement because if we don't believe they're performing satisfactory, I doubt very seriously they're going to agree that they're not performing satisfactory.
Well, no, there's, there's language in there that allows for cure periods and things like that. But I'm talking about the budget itself.
Yeah, no, I, I think what typically the contract that we would place together, and I, my background, Todd can correct me, in there, it would afford us, I would say is one of the negotiation items, that we have the ability to say that if these, this contract would not be maintained if we can't afford it. If we don't have the budgetary means to support it, the city would terminate on clause.
I guess the question is, how are we going to pay for this now? We don't have this budgeted this year.
Correct. We do not have it budgeted, but you recall we had 120,000 budgeted as a contingency that we have access to. I just spent 30,000 of it on restrooms. But we do have, I would guess, and Ashley, we're trying to talk it, we're probably guessing in the range of 50,000 to 60,000 for the first year. So we would have money in that available. Now, what it does is deplete our contingency. But in future years, what it means is, you know, the pie's not going to get bigger because we want it to. We'll have to readjust our priorities. The first, I mean, I was talking to, we, you know, with all due respect, I'm not going to add LPRs and then cut his contract for law enforcement. So that wouldn't make sense as much as I'd like to, but.
I was going to say, do we get a credit from his or a discount?
Yeah. Give him a target if he can increase, yeah, whatever. But anyway, so then we're really looking at us trying to incorporate that into our budget for the future years. So every year, as you know, budget balancing is a formidable act that we go through. It takes us several months to do. Typically, we under-budget our revenues and we over-budget our expenditures. So we always come in with extra FBA. So, you know, available financing typically improves at the end of each year. That being said, I don't want to start that year and change our assumptions and say, well, we're going to do. So what we probably do is I would lessen our, where we have some discretionary spending. The most likely target is we have capital expenditures that we budget ongoing revenues for, that I would reduce the amount of some of our capital expenditures by 50,000 or 60,000 a year, which equates, I mean, we spend $2 million on a project. So if I reduce it 50,000 or 60,000 dollars or whatever it would be a year, it's, it's still, the reality is that they'll be there. I don't, we have, I can't say why, we only have seven staff, so there's not staffing. I can, I have his contract for legal services, which I probably want to keep. And we have engineering and building inspection and those services. So I, you know, we do not have a lot of pure discretionary type of things that we can cut. So candidly, I'm looking at the types of things that we can cut. And that's where we budget and accumulate monies each year to do our capital projects out of ongoing revenues. So we would have to rescale those back accordingly, which would be probably the thing you would do at home if you don't have the money. The same kind of thing. You just say, well, I can't, we're not going to add that addition if we can't afford it.
Things like adding the extra streets like we did this last time on the.
We wouldn't be able to add, we wouldn't have that ability because the pie is not going to get bigger. Our revenue, it's not, the revenue doesn't change. It's just how we prioritize those expenditures. So in answer to you, we do have money this year, although it's not budgeted. We can absorb it within our budget for this year. And next year, we'd incorporate it in. And, but there is going to be a corresponding domino effect of something. And I don't know exactly where that is depending on how our revenues and our expenditures look at for the future years. That's one of the things I've been trying to do is cap our contract rate increases each year. So as you've seen, contracts coming, I cap it at a certain like CPI of 2% or 1% or something. So it's a fixed dollar amount. So if our revenue goes up 3%, our contracts are going up 2%, then, you know, then it's going to free up some money there type of thing. So, you know, each year is sort of like, we roll with it. We have a projection. We're still in a very good situation for the next five years at least that we projected out. But we'd have to, we'd have to accommodate it. And I'd have to report to you during the budget process as we get our better numbers on where our property taxes are and those kinds of things.
Also, the question came up about, is there additional cost over and above what we see in the, in here for the wireless data plans to run all these?
I think every, I kind of look at this, and I was talking to Ashley about this. I kind of view this as when you go into a car and you're going through and you're getting a car and you go back through the financing people and by the time, and they say, okay, this car is going to be 50,000. But if you want to, you can buy a five-year warranty. Or if you want to, we can upgrade this and service roadside delivery service or whatever. I think that's what they're talking about in there. There are possibilities. But that's a negotiable item and we have to go see where they're.
Well, you can't, you can't operate these without a wireless data plan that's got internet access.
As far as the like electrical connections and everything, we would need to hire an electrician for the wireless.
No, no, I'm talking about the wireless internet that connects them to the cloud, that connects that camera.
That would be included.
That's, that's built into that.
Included? Okay, thank you.
But we can upgrade to do different types of things. Like I said, there's opportunities to do a lot of different things. So the bids they have, almost every one of them has, if you want to add future X wires.
Just didn't see it in there, so that's the reason the person comes up. Because I want to make sure we're covered.
Yep.
You know, as, as we've all heard, I think from our law enforcement partners, that many criminals are using wireless jamming capabilities. It's my understanding through reading through some of this stuff, and I don't know if you should answer the question or law enforcement or maybe have representatives from Flock answer this. But I understand that radar detectors can interrupt the signals for these cameras.
I'm going to punt to the sheriff on that one.
I don't know of anything that, I mean, maybe, signal jammers are usually used for alarm systems within residents. Anything else would, I'd have to do research on. It's the first I've heard of that.
There's, there's written white papers on radar detectors interrupting the signal on these as they pull up. If they've got a radar detector in the car, it can deflect it.
Maybe that's a specific question for whatever vendor you choose. But to my knowledge, the only ones I've heard of are the ones that are jamming signals of Wi-Fi systems within a house.
Right, okay. And, you know, and to someone's earlier point about the accuracy of these, you know, somewhere around 90%. I think the last thing we're concerned about is having one of your guys pull up with his gun drawn with Carolyn Riker in the car. That, that wouldn't go over too well because we misread the license plate. So I have a little bit of concern about that as well. And I guess I ask Leac this question. What is the impending threat today? You know, we just got an amazing, and I'm like the others too as well about, you know, we live in a very safe city. But what is Leac's view of the impending threat that's requiring us to do this today versus six months, a year from now? Can somebody answer that question for me?
I think there are two members of Leac who probably could best answer that.
Feel free, and then I'll comment on the backside of that about a lot of different things.
Well, I think the fact, you know, that Leac has been looking into this for over a year. And, and just, we're talking about, like, you know, as a committee, we were talking about kind of the evolution of this technology throughout the county and, and whether or not Villa Park was going to jump on board with it. So it's, it's kind of a holistic conversation, if you will, about what's going on in the county, what other cities are doing. And do we as a city, to Mrs. Buxton's point, want to be left out? Do we want to be the only whole that doesn't have this data? So then now, once that word gets out, then do we become a target? So, I mean, that was part of the discussion. I have more too in, in my comments that we can work out. But yeah, that was kind of, we have been looking at this now for a year and we've done town halls and, you know, really gotten a lot of input from the residents. And really, I mean, I've got this in my comments too. But I mean, as far as public safety goes, I've never had a conversation with a resident where they've batted an eye as far as how much we spent for public safety. It really is a priority for the residents. And I think that's part of where Leac was coming with this as well. So I don't know if you have anything to.
Can I, can I jump on that? So I'm not part of Leac and, and I look at it as, so this is just Councilman Pitt's kind of through my eyes. And you kind of touched on it, Mayor Protem, is we are an island right now. And the last thing I want is for bad guys to say, hey, there's this really cool island over there. So there's LPRs throughout, you know, Orange or Anaheim Hills or Yorbaland or whatever. And they may catch us going into Villa Park. But since, love it, we don't have streetlights and, you know, et cetera, who's to say they didn't park a car somewhere inside our little island? And then they ditched the car that the LPR got going into VP, but that's not the car they took to go out of VP. And that car now has, God forbid, a child in it or drugs or something. So kind of to Mayor Protem's point, as far as why now? I have other notes too I won't get into. But I don't want to be that island that becomes a target for people to say, this is a great situation because it's dark, there's no streetlights and they don't track anything. So we could easily drop a car and take another one and we leave. So to me, that's kind of my, my, my thought on the why now. And I think it was 2012 or 2014 that it was presented before. And if I'm not mistaken, the cost of the cameras back then was probably, I don't know, six, seven times what they are now. So I think the affordability per camera has increased. But I wasn't on council then. I just think I remember something about that. So that's my comment about why now.
Councilman Wu.
First of all, I'm not against the technology itself. What I am concerned about is spending money when we don't need to. I mean, right now, we're doing, I mean, the sheriff's doing a phenomenal job. You know, it's been indicated there are other technologies that are available to us to track criminals and things like that that may be more extensive than this. I can tell you that as I've been campaigning, I've talked about safety in the city. And I get a mixed, I get a mixed review from people about the job that we've done. They think we've done a phenomenal job, but they think we could do more. Some do and some say, you don't have to do anything. So the license plate readers were something that's an additive that we may not necessarily need to do right now. That's the reason I asked about the threat. What's the threat to Villa Park? I understand the island. I understand the technology. But is there an impending threat? We've been through the gangs, you know, coming down here. We've been through several things. And that man over there has got a phenomenal workforce that takes very good care of us. And for us to spend, you know, he's going to come back next year and ask for more money or ask the new, the new council for more money, probably because their costs go up. Where's that going to come from? So you're going to put these cameras in and now you're taking money away from us, you know, having to pay the increase for the sheriff. That's my only comments about that. So, but I appreciate if you, are we tonight only picking one vendor? Or are we just saying these two are the two that we want to go negotiate with?
I think they, Leac has recommended Flock and an IP as the secondary. So our goal, I think my goal this evening is to say that you would recommend, you direct us to go negotiate primary with Flock and secondary, or at least one or two. Tell us the direction you want us to go and we go negotiate with the primary first and also secondary to the extent that it doesn't work out with the primary.
But there's a huge swing between the two.
That is, and I recognize that. And I think that's, what we're looking for is direction on where to go next. We have six bids. You obviously can go back to any of the six and say, we want to go with it. But Flock is the primary vendor that's used by the sheriff and most of the counterparts that enter contract cities. I think there's a comfort level with Leac about that. And I don't, you know, I can't answer the competitiveness of the various markets. But we didn't expect candidly more than two or three bids, but we got six. And, you know, we, but the council has the ability to give us any direction today. My hope is if you want to go forward, you give us direction of a primary and a secondary and we come back to you with some sort of contract, itemized, a recommended contract that you can itemize what you want. Or you say, don't go forward with it. I mean, whatever, we just need direction because right now it's, it's a policy decision and we defer to the council where that policy is.
Another thing that stuck out with me with regards to I was they use the term loan us the supplied hardware. I didn't understand what that meant, loan us the hardware.
So for both IP and Flock, it would be owned by them, the hardware? And then for the term of the contract, it would be leased to us?
That's the cloud or the camera itself?
The camera itself and then the cloud also.
Okay, so they're renting, we're renting the cameras? Is that basically?
We're purchasing a service. We're purchasing the service, if you will.
Okay, okay.
May I ask a question?
Thank you.
The three-year contract term, is that, how did we come up with three years?
That was sort of, we, we, you know, Ashley and I said, let's go out and go out to bid with the direction. And I think our recommendation was technology improvement is going to be over the next number of years. How many people, I mean, probably three years ago, we bought an iPhone 8 for my son. And now an iPhone 8 is, they're up to 15 or 14 or whatever. So technology is changing so fast that we didn't want to lock in, you know, too long a period. And then secondarily, any too short a period because the infrastructure becomes more cost per year because the installation gets, it doesn't get depreciated over multiple years. It's all in one time, so you're paying for everything upfront. So if we do it one year, and also we thought, you do it one year or so, a shortened time, you might have even less interest in a vendor who's going to say, well, look, I'm not going to do that just one year. Have no guarantee of a contract two or three years down the road. I want to have some sort of security that I know that we're going to have a business, a business model that works for them sustain. So the three years was something we proposed in our bid and asked them to come back with as a standard that we would work with. So it's a combination of technology improvements. In three years from now, they'll have things that we don't even imagine today. And I don't want to be locked into a 10-year contract or a five-year contract or something that is prohibitive. And a short-term contract, I don't think we're going to have the same level of interest from vendors because candidly, they're going to say, look, it costs us X amount of dollars and it's, it's going to be more per year if we go to a shorter-term contract.
I, I'm not suggesting a longer contract. I agree with you. But my concern is, and I read through it pretty well, but maybe I missed something. And this is just to put in your notes if, two things. One, does this include the actual subscription? Like, I understand we're paying for the service. But I think if any of us have alarm companies and you do a contract for like two years or whatever, then all of a sudden they're like, well, we're increasing your rates because it costs more for X, Y, and Z. So is there any, or is this something you would negotiate with them about making sure that we don't go above like a 3%?
We could hope for, but if you've, like, a good example is Spectrum. We have Spectrum and they go up every amount every year and I don't have a choice. So they're going, there may be some demands and there may be some candidly, some deal breakers that we may come back and say, look, they're, they're one unlimited increases every year or something. I don't want to propose something like that. So it's a negotiable item. I would think that, you know, I agree with you. I don't want to, I would love to cap them. I'd like, like I said, or started the conversation, I would like to cap it at a certain level because we have a budget certainty, so I know what I have to expect and budget each year. But, you know, the business model is their business model and they're entitled to say yea or nay if they don't want to do it or do want to do it. So that's a.
I wonder what they would have said if we would have asked for a two-year versus a three-year just so we could, you know, compare.
Typically, the contracts that other cities are doing have been about three years. So that's what we're typically hearing. Just because it's going to take them, you know, the better part of a year to get up, you know, running and everything else, selecting and all that. So it takes a little bit of time to get synchronized. So if you're two years, you're not going to get a good sampling of where you're at. So that's, that's part of where we're at. So talking to other cities, they've gone for about a three-year with a renewable option or something.
I have other comments, but I didn't want to usurp anybody.
Go ahead. Your further comments?
So I, I, I agree with some of the people that spoke here tonight as far as, you know, privacy and whatnot. And I think we all are very much concerned about privacy. I have to say, I think, you know, I think on my way driving here, you know, several of my neighbors have Teslas and I know that Teslas are recording. And I think it was mentioned in Eric Reynolds' comments. But I'm less concerned about privacy when it's talking about potentially saving, helping law enforcement, saving lives. And I want to say, I think Mr. Fasenely said that LPRs have not been instrumental in, in solving any crimes. And I want to say that the, the event that happened in Fashion Island with the couple that ended up coming visiting from another country. And unfortunately, the woman lost her life. And I believe it was LPRs that tracked that car halfway up through LA, if I'm not mistaken. So I, I want to challenge Mr. Fasenely, but he left. So I, I don't know if you know more on that, but I just, I'm pretty sure the mayor of Newport had mentioned that in one of his reports, that it was the LPRs along the way and the cooperation between cities that allowed them to be able to track this vehicle that came to Fashion Island and unfortunately took the life of a visitor that was coming to enjoy our Southern California area. I agree, it's not used to prevent or deter. I don't think that's been something that has been presented. It's more of a tool, another tool in the toolbox to use to help aid. It's more of a tool, another tool in the toolbox to use to help aid finding or solving a problem. I agree, I don't like the idea of Big Brother, I don't want to be watched. But, you know, I go on the toll roads, fast track, that snaps a little picture of me. I go and withdraw money. You can be at Target or Walmart, and you can look up, and it says, smile, you're on camera. So it's all around us, and I'm not saying that means that it's okay. But you can drive down the street, and everybody's Ring cameras. Or, you know, people have very extensive, you know, monitoring systems that can catch me driving because they have it mounted on their roof. So the privacy issue, I think, kind of for me personally, falls by the wayside because of all the other stuff going on in our city and neighboring cities or whatnot. I'd like to agree that if we do choose to go forward, I do like the idea of, after three years, an audit of some sort is done to see if it is something of value. We have a fiduciary responsibility to our residents to make sure that the money we are spending on it is worth something. So I agree, whether it's whatever option we go with, if we do go forward, there does need to be some sort of audit at the end of the trial period. And I like the idea of this because we talk about it on a federal, national, state level of if you see something, say something. So having LPRs is the ultimate, if you see something, say something. And that's us sharing data and helping to make sure that somebody in another city might need the data that gets collected from that particular LPR. And back in 2021, I believe, when unfortunately, our law enforcement officers were getting ambushed all over the state, all over the nation, City Villa Park championed a resolution that made us a law enforcement-friendly city. And it was wonderful for a while there. We had lots of municipalities that they would come, and they would, and they still do. And they go to the Coffee Grove, or they use the substation here. And what are we, and we passed it unanimously. It wasn't this particular council, it was the council before this one. How are we enforcing that we are a law enforcement-friendly city if we are not providing the tools of a license plate reader to our law enforcement? So those are my comments.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and have the rest of the dais have a turn. And then if you or any other member of the public would also like to say something, we'll allow a second round of public comment. Because as you can tell, we have tried to exhaust all avenues for hearing out people and hearing public comments related to this. Whether they're knowledgeable about the subject or not, everybody should have a voice on the matter. Councilman Wu, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, I don't want to repeat everybody what, everyone what he said, but I just want to read the report from our OCSD, our Sheriff's Department. Again, Captain and your deputy have done fantastic job. I think that's one thing that we all, as residents of Villa Park, can agree. But let's talk about the statistic. Captain earlier just mentioned we had zero burglary last month. Actually, he had reported zero burglary for the last three months, if I recall. So looking at this report, back in 2023, total burglary, four. Four residential, two grain theft, one stolen vehicle. That's the statistic in 23. So far in 24, five grain theft on attending e-bikes. As Captain had mentioned, those are opportunist crime. So if we could continue to promote our residents, close your garage, don't leave valuable outside, that probably would drop to zero. Three burglary, out of the three, two attempt commercial and one truck. Two petty theft, again, unlocked vehicles. These are all the crimes that we have in Villa Park. Now, we are going to ask to spend $175,000, as our city manager had mentioned. We only have a pie so big, so something had to give. What he has suggested is our capital improvement. So far, next year, we are presented to nine different streets to have some kind of rehabilitation for the streets. They are Brymyer, Colling Grove, Jemai Street, Ryan, Olim Lighter, Evergreen, Frederick, Potter, Lockway. Those are the nine streets. One of them is going to be cut, because we are going to put the money to LPR when our city is whom is safe. And we are here to support our deputies, for sure. Personally, I'm supporting their effort to keep our cities safe. But I just don't think, in our limited financial, we should spend this kind of money on this. I also want to say, out of our general funding, we already spent 42% on public safety. And that just take Flock as an example. The very first, if you take three years, $175,000, you take that divided into each year, and you take that divided by the deputy's hourly salary. That would yield us, if we are doing eight hours a day as a full-time job, eight hours a day, that would yield us 40 extra days. To me, if we want to spend money on public safety, maybe that's another way that we can look at. Increase our deputies' personnel here instead of having a camera around, sitting there. Again, not necessarily preventing crime, but it is a great tool to catch crime. And on top of that, the other thing is, they are promoting seven cameras. What happened to the streets will not receive the camera. I certainly understand we are on the island. I understand the city of Orange already approved the cameras. But if you really look at it, all those cameras are not on our side of, are not on the 50, the 55 East. All of them are on Orange. Why? I would imagine is because they have more crimes on that side. Orange Park Acre, or where we belong, less crime. So they probably see as, there's no need to put that. So even if we, as a city, put the cameras, the camera works if they all link together. The closest city that has camera is Yobalinda, over the 91. And we all know, the criminals are a lot smarter. They are still dumb criminals out there, I understand that. But they are getting smarter and smarter. They will know where the cameras are. Once they hop on 55, they are gone. Or they could do their crime, swap out the license plates, again, they are gone. Or they can just go on jamboree, go down south, they disappear, as long as they don't go to Yobalinda. My point in saying all this is, while spending for Flock, the very first year as our council paid to mention, they are requesting us to pay entirely upfront. I understand it is up to negotiation, but that's $175,000 upfront now. That just say, for gracious God, they say, hey, you know what, Villa Park? I will allow you to do a three-year payment plan. But within that, the very first year, they're asking for $63,000. Steve already mentioned, currently, this year, we have $120,000 as a contingency, where they spend $30,000 on the plumbing. To me, I'd rather to see the money where we actually can see it, such as the street, capital improvement, or just lactated plumbing that we're going to have this issue. Because I feel so bad for our Villa Park kids couldn't use the library because of plumbing issue. I just don't want to see us, again, I don't want to be painted as, I don't promote safety in our city. I truly do, I support our law enforcement, I support our firefighter. I just have to look at money. If we, if today, we are able to generate extra income to our city, I would say, go for it. Unfortunately, we are not able to generate extra income to cover this extra cost that we have been operating. I'm very hesitant. Again, I would, I don't want one of those nice streets residents next year to come to our city council, when are you going to fix my street? I don't want children, well, I'm sorry, I cannot fix your street because we just put LPR around our city. You have to wait another term. So that's, my concern is money talk. I would love to have for all of you, but I know that's not necessarily what I can afford or I want to afford. Probably can't afford it, as long as we all take our loan, that's another thing. Maybe we can take our loan for this, but I don't think the city wants to take our loan. So that's my comment, is looking at the money.
As you requested.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so bear with me, I have quite a few comments about this. So of course, you know, I echo Councilman Wu's concerns about budget. I think we all do up here. No one up here wants to spend money lightly. And this money will have to come from somewhere. And so far, we've checked with the city, there are no grant funding opportunities. No one has come forward, so we're not going to get any free money for this. I would, if this does go forward, like to see some sort of tangible return on investment numbers. Whatever that is, like numbers of arrests due to ALPR data, items recovered using it. I would like to see something if we're going to go down this road so that our residents can see that we are getting something for this money. To Councilman Wu's point, I also asked about extra sheriff time. Our sheriff's vehicles are equipped already with license plate readers. We would only be able to get about five hours a week for what we would pay for the pole-mounted license plate readers. So, you know, you're kind of exchanging like, 24/7 surveillance for five hours a week. So, and this is only a three-year commitment. You know, our average is $43,900 a year. And if we don't find that it's a valuable tool after three years, we can either cut back or eliminate the program altogether. So Stanton has had huge success with the Flock cameras. They're very impressed by them. They've, they have a large amount of stolen vehicles in that city, and so they've had great success with that. However, this year, they still chose to cut back on the number of cameras based on the data that they have gotten using those. So I think that's something where, you know, three years from now, we can pivot a little bit and make those adjustments. I also echo some, you know, residents' concerns about privacy. The city of Norfolk, Virginia was just sued, like, just like yesterday, by plaintiffs represented by the Institute for Justice. They're challenging the city, saying that they, and I quote, "have installed a network of cameras that make it functionally impossible for people to drive anywhere without having their movements tracked, photographed, and stored in an AI-assisted database that enables the warrantless surveillance of their every move." They filed in the US District Court for the Eastern District of Virginia. So I do imagine that going forward, we will probably see the Supreme Court ruling on this issue. I do not feel that we are opening ourselves up to litigation. And, you know, because we're such a small city, Norfolk has over 238,000 residents. And we're not talking about the sort of coverage that they have. So it will be an interesting, you know, exercise to see where this goes. However, if you're concerned about privacy, we also have the Sheriff's Real-Time Operations Center, which is tracking publicly available information. And when they say that, they're talking about a really wide range of information. I mean, school districts, shopping centers, they're all taking this information. It's all going into this database. There's facial recognition going on in Anaheim. You know, a lot of this data is all being pooled on our residents anytime we leave Villa Park. So I think the ship has sailed a little bit. I don't think our eight intersections are really going to be making a difference when we're talking about privacy. But I do, you know, consider that. And our sheriff's vehicles are already equipped with LPRs, but they've also already been effective in Villa Park, using that system. So, and then according to a study at the University of Michigan, many jurisdictions have zero laws regarding LPRs. However, I am also encouraged that our Orange County Sheriff's Department has Policy Number 463, which governs their use of license plate readers and outlines the purpose, administration, operations, data collection and retention, accountability, release of data, and training for those authorized to use or access their ALPR system. So this is a very thorough document, and I commend the Sheriff's Department for, you know, coming up with this like, long before Villa Park ever considered it. Also, as one speaker stated, California law prohibits any California law-based law enforcement agencies from providing the data to anyone outside the state. So as I stated before, I think the concern is about being left out. And if we look at our surrounding cities with cameras, Orange is with the Flock system, Anaheim is with Vigilant, Garden Grove is with Flock, Tustin is with Vigilant, Placentia is with Vigilant, Brea is with Vigilant, Fullerton is with Vigilant, Irvine is with Vigilant and Flock, Huntington Beach is with Flock, Costa Mesa is with Flock, Lake Forest is with Flock, Stanton is with Flock. And I didn't even go any further out. I mean, you know, you can see that we truly would be the whole in that map. I mean, I just named every city that is directly adjacent to Villa Park. And so that is, that is my real concern. Is everyone else is doing this, and yes, we're crossing their cameras, but what if we do, if something really bad happens here? You know, what if there's an incident at the school? What if you are the one person who's the burglary on that, you know, sheriff's report? You would want to know that our city is doing everything they could to go after these guys and try and, you know, solve that crime and get your property back. So, you know, that's a little bit of where I'm coming from. And then I'm going to bring up something that's probably very unpopular, which is the fact that the sheriff was really looking at this map and trying to keep our budget in mind. And I am also very concerned about our budget. But when you look at the map, I'm also very concerned that there's no camera at Santiago and Meats. And I did ask the sheriff at our LiAC meeting that if he were to add one more camera, where would it be? And he did, you know, say that Santiago and Meats would be a good location for it. So being as Orange is not putting any cameras anywhere near Villa Park, I would almost believe that leaving that particular intersection empty kind of actually leaves another hole there. And so while it's probably not popular, because again, I'm also concerned about the money, but I am suggesting that we add a camera in that location. Because if we're going to do it, I would hate to think that all of our residents are paying for something, and yet we're leaving a section of our residents vulnerable without a license plate reader in their area. So, and then if I could, with your indulgence, Mr. Mayor, one more thing. Just kind of do the pros-cons that LiAC was talking about as far as Flock goes. And we did, it was the city manager's suggestion that we did direct staff to negotiate a contract. Because during our LiAC meeting, I also brought up the same concerns about the Flock contract. And the Flock also asked for a 30-day window to cure instead of a 10-day period, which I didn't really feel was acceptable either. But the pros for Flock were very much that they are already being used by the Orange County Sheriff's Department. So the Flock OS system is a familiar interface for them. The cons for them, obviously, was the terms of contract, which we would have to negotiate. IP, the pro was obviously that it had the lowest bid, but I did feel that it had a really competitive bid package. They are also used by Chapman University, so we have another local entity using that system. And they use the Genetec camera provider that several of the other bidders used as well. But the cons for IP were that they do seem to be relatively new to the field, only starting in like, I believe they said 2015, I think it was. And they primarily service universities. So we would be our first local city, as I kind of went through the list of, you know, Flock and Vigilant being the majority providers. So, so those are my comments. And like I said, I'm kind of hesitantly asking for another camera, but yeah, thank you.
Well, I'd like to thank everybody for their comments on the dais. I understand there may be a question or a comment out there. If you would like to come to the dais, and Mr. Sillsell, please.
I'm a representative, Mary and I have been representing Neighborhood Watch. That's the reason I'm on the committee for, I don't know how many years, 25 years. Have, how many people have ever been burgled here in Villa Park? Anybody here present?
Thank you.
Mary and I were burgled twice at home. We didn't have cameras, of course, at that time, but they were the same burglaries. They came back because the ease of breaking in was, and once you know the house, it's pretty easy to go faster the next time. They know right where the goodies are. Bottom line is, when you've, when you consider the price, the cost of loss, not just the dollars and cents, but the emotional experience, you never really get over it. It's sort of, you've been violated. I'm sure that rape victims feel that all their lives. Well, it's not so bad when you lose things, but it is bad when they take a, a blob of gold that was many wedding rings in their family, and you can't replace that. So, well, that's one reason. If you think of this in terms of not, what it's going to do for us, whether it's dollar-wise, we've had some major burglaries here with, that would have paid off that, if we could have prevented them, would have paid that camera bill for three years. So it really isn't dollars either. It's safety and assurance to our community. About 10 years ago, the governor saw a fit to release a lot of prisoners in the state. We had concern here. We talked about it at length, and that's when we in Neighborhood Watch took particular concern over how can we be prepared for an influx of people that have been in prison and familiar with the jobs, even the community. We learned, we learned that when they go to prison, having been caught, they're usually furloughed in a short period of time, but they learn the trade from others, and they get favor. If you, if seeking favor, learning, they learn how to do it better next time and not get caught. So these people are professionals, generally. You have to assume they are. So bottom line here is, I think the money side of it is, should not be considered, because the size of the loss to the person, all of us want to be safe. Okay, cast that one out. As far as helping us with Villa Park, the number one reason we have kept crime low in this city is we are finally teaching people to call it when they see it. Lock your doors, lock your cars, don't put guns in the backseat, which happened two years ago, they stole it. Call in when you see something, say something, not next week, not in an hour, now. So we have a real good chance of getting them, and that's one of the main reasons we're successful here. Plus, we're very concerned, people here, take, take responsibility. So we could do this without the cameras, but then I turn it around and say, who, who really understands how these will be used? We can sit here and deliberate on all the ways that we could do, put another camera up at another intersection. I'm sure they could answer why that one wasn't picked, but maybe it should be, and it should be discussed. But the people who know these and are using them throughout the county and the state have gone to school and learned how to use them effectively, and they know people wants, they want their privacy as possible. I look at this as hire the right people and turn them loose. I've done that with contractors. They appreciate it. Pay them when they're due. The same thing is true here. This is a very complicated science, which none of us really knows well. Who's the best talented people to make this decision? Obviously, finance has to be one, but the most important one is let the, let the Sheriff's Department decide. If they need it and they want that tool in their, in their kit, let's not be the town where they can duck out for an hour while they're looking elsewhere. And we are not surrounded by a lot of cities, we're surrounded by one, and they just approved it. That was important. So that's all I have to say, except don't make our job harder because of a few thousand dollars. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone, sir?
Quickly, you know that commercial, that's the insurance commercial that can't stop you from becoming your parents? I mean, I'm at the airport, and I have to stop service members and thank them for their service. I'm in Ralph's, I see a firefighter, a first responder, a police officer. I stop, I put my hand on their shoulder, and I say, "Thanks for your service, just stay safe." I do that every single time. Can't stop me from becoming my parents. I've got first responders in the family, they serve on destroyers. My, my youngest daughter's boyfriend, probably fiance, can't get him mad because he used to play football at the University of Washington, he's a firefighter up in Seattle. If I read what this stuff does, it gives the officers, the first responders, the information they need on a real-time basis when they make a stop. If it saves the life of one person, $175,000 is nothing. I mean, in a, I mentioned earlier, I had a prior career. I used to be a strategic management consultant to board members and, you know, chairman and board members of companies like Johnson &amp; Johnson, Procter &amp; Gamble, Coca-Cola, Google. They would pay me a quarter million dollars for six weeks' work. So I was able to retire when I was 47. Back then, in those days, the price of a television commercial was a quarter million dollars. They paid me, and they never even remembered they spent it two months later. But it's different here. This is the most interesting meeting I've ever been to, that's why I stayed. I was going to have my say and, and leave. But the, I, I saw, I remember seeing the sign about these cameras going up. I got to admit, my knee-jerk reaction was, nah, they don't want it. But then I remembered, I stop every service member or person I see and remind them to stay safe, and I thank them. There's a YouTube video. It's about the soldiers at the, at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier. And, you know, you're silent, but it's a great video, because somebody's not being respectful in a way. He reproaches that person's marvelous. But anyway, if it, if it makes it safer for them, and it's a three-year trial, you know, when we used to do ad spending, we were, I was at Leo Burnett Advertising in Chicago. Morris the Cat, the Maytag Man, Mayhem, these are all Leo Burnett creations. Being almost 70, I have no idea where I was going to go with that. But, you know, they spent money well, and, and I just see this as being money well-spent. Oh, that's what it was. Clients didn't want to spend all the money, right? We make a media plan, we make a presentation for this campaign, and they did something called a match. We would do things, if they, if they balked at first on the full boat, you know, I was in account client service, we'd, okay, well, let's, let's do a matched market spending test. You know, we've got these markets that are already using Flock, we've got these markets that are always, let's do a partial part of Villa Park, like at the intersection of Meats and Santiago. And, and start it smaller, but give them a tool that might save a life, because really, I've been sitting here listening to all this, and I agree with both sides, but a life is, is just worth so much more than $175,000. I mean, and you can pat yourself on the back three years from now and say, yeah, that was a good spend, you know? So anyway, that was my, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stone, do you have a different comment, because we've already heard you before? Is it a new, new aspect to this? I, if it is, please come forward, but if not, we've already heard your, your point on this. Do you have a new, do you have new items to add to the conversation, or are you going to repeat your same comments? Maybe you heard something that motivated you one direction or the other. Please just come, come forward, speak.
Mr. Mayor, three, some very small comments. The city is buying a technology that is unproven. Put it, the budget at risk, the capital especially. Two, the councilwoman enumerated a long list of cities that have the same camera they are recommended here. Do you know if the crime has decreased in those cities? Three. How are you going to measure the improvement that this technology is going to give us if there are, we are in a city that last month, there were no robberies?
Thank you for your comment, sir. Any further comments out there?
Do you want me to, excuse me?
You okay?
Yeah, just have a little something caught my throat. Do you want me to address the, do the cities, have they had an improvement?
Feel free.
So I only know about a couple of the cities that I listed. Orange is brand new. Excuse me. They have just started putting in cameras, so they're too new to be proven, but Stanton has really seen tremendous success with the Flock cameras. However, I mean, I will couch that in the fact that Stanton is a very different city from Villa Park. They have chop shops, they get a lot of stolen cars, you know, things that, that don't necessarily translate to Villa Park. So Stanton's success would not be our success. I also spoke with Lake Forest. Lake Forest, they're happy with the cameras, there's anecdotal evidence that they've done well, but they haven't really been keeping like hard statistics. And again, I believe, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Lake Forest has been three years on the system. So they haven't done a good job on keeping some of those statistics, which is why I was asking that as part of this process, I would like to see some, some sort of number, whatever the, between the city and the sheriff, whatever you think a good metric might be, I would like to see some sort of return on investment, because I was struck by Lake Forest, how like three years in, and they really don't have a lot of feedback. So, thank you.
Okay. Anybody, everybody in the audience good? Everybody on the dais? I'm going to invite our captain in charge of police services up. Real quick, just to address, since I'm totally putting you on the spot, okay, I'm totally putting you on the spot, there was a question about the Fashion Island incident. Are you fully aware of that? I, I know that's outside of your, your purview, so to speak.
I am aware of the incident, and like, I wouldn't be able to speak on specifics of it, but just speaking of an incident like that, and they happen all the time, and what the officers and deputies can do, and I, somebody mentioned it, in real time, they can access the direction of said vehicle that's involved in whatever crime, whether it's a kidnapping, a murder, a bank robbery, whatever it may be, and they can access the direction of that thing. And in that particular case, and like, don't quote me on this, the, the officers were able to locate that vehicle and pursue it almost immediately after the crime had occurred, and then they ended up catching the individual. So in that case, we didn't necessarily save a life unless you can say that you saved a life down the road from a person being a victim of those same, I think, three individuals. But that's my basic understanding of that particular incident and any incident like it. It just, it gives our Real-Time Operations Center and deputies in the field access to those cameras and other cameras in the region, and it's just, it's just a tool to keep the, not just Villa Park safe, but the whole, you know, Orange County area safe.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something? Just because you asked, and I apologize for keep bringing up Yorba Linda, and it's a policy decision, so don't take this as an endorsement or anything, but our chief in Yorba Linda, I mean, she gives a monthly report, or I think it's monthly, and she talks about catching people all the time because of Flock, because it can track it. Now, she could be lying, I mean, I, I'm a lawyer, he's a cop, whatever, but they say it helps them, for what it's worth.
And to add to that, a lot of the, at least in the first couple of years, I think the, when you mentioned anecdotal evidence, a lot of it's going to be individual success stories. It's not going to be necessarily raw data, like, so whatever, Lake Forest didn't, chose not to really pick a metric to, to track it, and it's all varying, it, it's all in its infantile stages right now for every, for all of us, and we'll have to figure out that metric system. But the individual success stories are, I think, are going to really tell a story in the first couple of years.
Thank you.
So in speaking with Councilmember John Demetriou, his car was stolen, and it was a license plate reader that was able to track it to Costa Mesa and got his car back.
That's a council member in the city of Orange.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Maybe you save the worst for last, but I can tell you, I use this stuff, my colleagues, on a daily basis. And within the past two months, we found a suspect who is wanted for vehicular manslaughter, several suspects that were wanted for felony hit-and-run, and it is, I would say, arguably one of the primary tools. So with all due respect to Mr. Fassinelli, he couldn't be more mistaken. I have a feeling Mr. and Mrs. Fassinelli, and I will disagree on a lot of things. All due respect to them, I appreciate their voice, I'm very happy that they decided to weigh in. I think that's what we should all do, whether we agree or disagree. I appreciate his expertise, but I disagree. I'm in the business of catching people. He's in the other business. He even said it himself, he couldn't have said it better. He mentioned geofencing. Geofencing is something you usually need a warrant for. This is a warrantless, plain view, observable tool that hides your privacy, but allows us to find bad guys. It couldn't be any more cut and dry, any easier, and for the cost of, what would another deputy potentially cost us, roughly speaking, if we wanted another halftime, let alone full time?
I refuse to comment on that, sir.
Okay, exactly. A lot more money, okay? We heard that the closest cities of Yorba Linda actually were surrounded not only by Anaheim, Yorba Linda, Orange, and I have it on very good authority from somebody within the Sheriff's Department at a certain supervisor whose district we are in is looking at purchasing for unincorporated areas. So our county pockets are going to be ringed with the exact same cameras, and arguably, I believe it's Flock that they're looking into. So don't quote me on that, but I have it on from a very high-ranking individual within the Sheriff's Department. We've had several high-end burglaries this year, correct me if I'm wrong, well north of $100,000, on, at three or four at least, if I recall?
Correct. And to your point, I believe that the Board of Supervisors was already approved, last meeting, to add those cameras to unincorporated areas.
So literally, we would be the donut hole in the middle of the donut, and, and, yeah, and the island. And to think that we don't have criminals coming through our city is literally like leaving our doors unlocked at night, and that's what people used to do. But those days are unfortunately long since gone. Leaving your windows open and unlocking your doors at night is a bad idea, and that's exactly what we would do if we don't approve this tonight, and in my opinion, look strongly towards Flock. I don't really care if you want to go one direction or the other because of financial reasons, but I'm telling you right now, my personal experience working with Flock, and I have no financial interest in either company, it is a phenomenal company, they provide a phenomenal service, it's what has been recommended. In fact, Orange did a sole-source contract because they believed in it so much. This is an extremely cash-strapped city, extremely, and for them to do a sole-source contract with Flock says a lot. I, I just want to say thank you for everybody's input. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tim for her diligence, for her constant questions, for her constant attendance at these meetings. I thought her questions were thoughtful, I thought her comments were intuitive, and I think she sees the benefit to law enforcement. Try it for three years. It's an insurance policy, that's what it is. And with all due respect, the comment that this is going to somehow, some way cost somebody their street from getting resurfaced, we always find a way to find a little extra money year in and year out. Every, every year that I've been on this council for eight years, we've always under-projected or underestimated what our actual income is and what our expenditures really are. So I, I think this is a no-brainer. I would respectfully request that you trust the Sheriff's Department. Sheriff Barnes is 100% behind this. Obviously, the Board of Supervisors is behind this, and I, for one, who've used it to catch the worst of the worst, am 100% behind this. That's all I have. I'd like to make a motion for a Flock.
Can I make a substitute motion to include the extra camera that Mayor Pro Tim?
Or, or, or move one around?
Or could we ask city staff to include that as part of your negotiation and maybe bring it back to council with, with a proposal with the extra camera or without?
Sure.
See how much they would increase the bid by?
Yeah.
And then we would be able to make a more informed decision.
I'd be willing to accept that.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sir.
Captain, you mentioned supervisor had approved Flock or camera for the unincorporated area, which we are surrounded by. That's where I'm more looking. Do you know how many they approved?
I don't know if they, I don't think they approved a specific camera amount. I believe it was a dollar amount to add cameras, and like, I think it was just in, again, in its beginning stages, out of their discretionary fund. beginning stages, out of their discretionary fund, I believe it was, not, not today's meeting, but the last one. And I'm sure it's all public record, so, but, I'm sure it was a dollar amount, not a camera amount.
Do you know what, how much dollar or steep?
I'd have to look it up. I wouldn't want to misstate it.
And one other thing I forgot to mention was, the city of Irvine just approved 150 cameras. So, the safest city in America, quote-unquote, 150 cameras. So, things to think about.
Can I add, to the, not add to the motion, but in your motion, can we make sure the city discusses with the Flock about if there is a subscription cost on top of that?
Yeah.
And, and something about some sort of audit that produces?
I, I want to address the audit a little bit, because some of the suggestions are process numbers. I don't care how many cameras, I mean, how many pictures they take a minute or whatever. That's not a, those are-
That's not what I was-
I know, but I, as far as some sort of audit, are they complying with the procedures or whatever? I don't want to ask the sheriff personally, you know, how many inquiries their people have had to make into that, because that's their business, they're doing investigations. So I think what we want to look at, and this is something that you all have to think about, is how are you going to ju, to tell the residents it's been successful or not? Is our crime rate dropping, or are we getting our resolutions increasing, or those kinds of things? So I think Mayor Protem has suggested that we work with the sheriff to come up with some metric. I think that's what we're gonna need to do, and that's not an easy thing. So, I mean, I'm talking to the city manager of Lake Forest, and, and while they may not have come up with a metric that's really that good, it's not because they haven't tried to grapple with it, but that they haven't come up with one that they feel that is, you know, they have a different crime rate, they have different sets of issues. They have homeless issues and things that we don't, we're not grappling with. So, they're drap, they're, they're dealing with a lot of other things, and so the metric that they have, they haven't come up with a satisfactory one. It's not that they haven't tried, it's a challenge, and I, I agree that we need to talk to the sheriff and see that something that works specifically for Villa Park.
Well, that was my concern. It's not so much how many images are captured and what those images and how many people, it's more of the success, and it could be success because it ended up catching a, a car in Stanton or somewhere else. It's more of just, and if it's working with the sheriff, whatever it is, I don't care if it's with Flock or if it's with sheriff, but I do think that we, we should have some sort of annual report so that the residents can understand that, yes, it worked because it helped obtain, you know, an end result that was positive for law enforcement and negative for the bad guy.
How about I, how about I make this amendment to the motion that we work the Sheriff's Department to come up with a, in each case, and I don't know if this is functionally, from an accounting standpoint, possible, but on any major felony, if they could task some of their, for lack of a more appropriate word, bean counters to tally or come up with an audit, maybe pick 10% of their felony cases, 1% of felony, I don't know, whatever number would give us a, an accurate estimate of where LPR cameras used in catching these suspects. I think that is a, is a fairly doable ask, and perhaps, that's not something necessarily near purview, may have to rise to that of an assistant sheriff or the undersheriff himself. But I think we can make that ask, and I think it, it's almost like doing an inventory of evidence. You take a look, a certain percentage of it, and that can give us some pretty decent feedback on, for felony arrests or misdemeanor arrests, we looked at X amount of cases and LPR was used in these cases. Because I'm, I'm willing to bet, it's a lot. It is a staggering number. I think the sheriff was quoted in saying that 33, 33% of those folks that are getting arrested at a minimum when they're successfully prosecuted, not just arrested, but successfully prosecuted, were somehow, some way involved in LPRs. That's a, it's a big number. And that's, that are just successfully prosecuted. Don't quote me on that, because I didn't hear it out of his mouth. So, Steve, you mentioned something along those lines, but do you think that is potentially a doable ask?
It seems reasonable to me. I think with all the technology that we're, like, we're evolving every day with that, and I think we're, we're getting better. I mean, compared to where we were 10, 20 years ago, I think now that, you know, everybody's kind of getting a standardized system-
Yeah.
I think if we go to our technology division with an ask of some sort of, and I think return on investment's the perfect way to put it-
Indeed.
-to show some sort of, you know, data that, that, now that we have a baseline from this point forward or from whatever point forward, I, I think it's a reasonable ask.
So, keep in mind, I do keep in mind, if we have five incidents a year and we solve two, that's 40% increase. So, the number's kind of distorted based on a city like other cities, so we may have numbers that look dramatically increased, but I think the key is, do we get one more than we did before?
Right.
Then, that kind of thing. So I think we need to kind of understand that there's, there's orders of magnitude, and we're, since we're so small, we're gonna have X numbers. And if, if we increase by 50% the applicants, that might just be one other person we got.
Well, yeah, I mean, with, with respect, I'm not even thinking about drilling down that narrow to our city because the sample size is so small. I'm candidly asking from a countywide standpoint, is this a valuable tool?
Sure.
Because we have other cities in Villa Park that are somewhat similar, some that are massively different. But if we look at it from a globalistic point of view, I'm sure they can drill down specifically for our city, but I don't think that's a fair, to your point, you can have it swayed by such a huge number by one or two things. If you look at things from a countywide perspective, is this tool being utilized?
Sure.
Did it help catch people? That's the number we want. You know, it's, look, we don't have a minority report. We can't predict who's gonna commit XYZ crime, but we do have tools that can help us, as I did earlier this year, literally track a car from point A to point B throughout the day, up to including on the back of a tow truck, where I flocked that tow truck to its end destination, where I had units respond code three and detain a subject to find out that the person that he had rented the vehicle to had literally ran over a pedestrian on the freeway and killed him. I mean, you, you just can't get a better example of how this works than that, let alone the, the vehicular homicide suspect out in the middle of nowhere, when we would have spent investigators to LA for weeks, if not months, tracking down bogus addresses. We found him within two weeks because of LPR technology. So, I'm just telling you, this stuff works, it's phenomenal, and it will protect your privacy. Trust me. I rarely say that, but trust me on this one. Do you have further, sir? Councilman, you had a question?
Yeah, can I ask you a, a question? Because again, I, I do believe the technology work, but it's always come down to the budget, and that's more my main concern. And earlier you mentioned, within your eight years being on the dais, we always find the money to take care of our streets.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's why I brought it up.
No, I, I appreciate that, and, and I'm not disagreeing with you.
I'm curious, in your eight years, where do we find that money, still take care of all the streets, adding on to this extra expense that we are going to add on?
Because he's really good at what he does, and so are our finance people. They always underestimate, and we always out-return from a property values perspective, always. I haven't seen it one time. Steve, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're right.
Okay, you just, the only reason why, I mean, before you mentioned this, our city manager did mention, if we approved this, something had to give. And he mentioned capital improvement is one of the area had to give. So, I, I-
It's a good question. No, I think-
Your experience, from person who is budgeting, that's, that's where, you know, my biggest concern is this. I, I, again, I'm not saying it doesn't work.
No, I understand that.
But it's, we are a very unique city. We're working with, again, I understand you mentioned, city of Orange is in a deficit, but they can increase their sales tax, and that's what they are trying to do.
Right.
Villa Park, even if we increase our sales tax, it's still not gonna make a dent.
Wouldn't do a thing. Yeah.
So that's, you know, that's where my biggest concern is, is how can we afford it?
No, I think it's a good question. I'm just saying, Steve is, with all respect and huge compliments, overly cautious, and so is his finance staff. So, I think a $50,000 difference in one year, as much as that may sound to our personal budgets, is not as significant of a hit as it is to, I mean, it's not as significant a hit to the city as it would be to us personally. So, I appreciate it.
You didn't hear that, Sheriff. You're not, he's gonna come in and say, $50,000, I'm gonna come in for $100,000. And they do. They do come in with numbers that are huge.
Since, since we're making their job a little easier.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, I do, I feel us being on this dais is our job to treat our city money as our own money.
Indeed.
Let me, let me just offer that, to the extent that you approve a contract, that becomes a contractual obligation, it's my responsibility to come forward. And right now, I mean, you're asking me what's gonna happen next year. I mean, you know, the economy could falter, things could go up, a down, property tax collections by the treasurer could go low, I mean, it could go high. I mean, we're, we're speculating here, based on trends and things like that. So, it becomes a contractual obligation, it's my responsibility to come back to you and say how we budget that. Right now, I'm giving you my best estimate. I, I'm saying I'm probably intuitively close that we're gonna get there and we can budget for it, but I, you know, I mean, if, if there's a, you know, nobody predicted the pandemic, right?
Right.
Couple of years ago, and that changed all the revenue pictures for everybody. So, that being said, I think my responsibility is come back to you and say, this is an obligation you've set, I'm gonna, this is how we're gonna budget for it, and these are things we're gonna have to either fix or not, or, or we got money to do this and that. And every year, recall during our budget workshops, we talk about things that we certainly can do or can't do, and things that the council says, well, these are no longer priorities, or yes, they're priorities, or whatever. So that's, that's the process it's going to be. So I think that the key is, if this council sets this as a priority, it does become just that, a priority that we will come back with, a funding mechanism. And what that is, maybe we've got increased revenues, maybe it's decreased expenditures elsewhere, you know, whatever it will be, we'll figure out a way and come back and report back in the spring as part of the budget process. So that, you know, but this is, what we're doing here is, the council is setting a priority. I think that's what we're trying to get to.
I just want to make sure that the nice street I mentioned won't get their street ex out next year if we had to cut something. I, I, again, I'm just much more careful on the budget. You know, I, I do want to promote safety for our residents. I don't want to see any kind of money loss or burglary, but again, I think it is, I take it as personally my job to make sure our city financially sound and still provide what we always provide, which street is one of, what we always provide, Flock or LPL is a new service we would like to provide, but I just want to make sure that we financially can afford it.
Well, that would be, that's our objective, is, and that's the direction you're giving us. So I think that's what we're, that would be a successful evening for me this evening, is you guys giving us direction and we go forward.
Thank you. I'm gonna go ahead and call the questions, since we've all had a turn to speak, unless there's anything further from the dais.
Just clarify, what was it?
I'm, I made a motion for Flock based upon what we all drilled down on at the-
Can I just make sure that we clarify that you, you are, Flock and then secondarily would be IP, right?
Correct.
So, I have the direction that if Flock is a deal breaker and they come back and say, oh, you know, all upfront, all three years upfront or something, I say, nah, nah.
Then we go to IP, absolutely.
Okay, so I, I want to just add that.
What I, what I should, what I should restate, it's just getting late, I apologize, low blood sugar, is that I'm going to take the recommendation that the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee made, as Flock is number one and IP is number two, depending upon contractual terms, negotiations, hardship that staff may have to deal with in dealing with each company, and whatever is in your general purview as the city manager. That's my motion.
And is this just looking at 17 cameras, or are we looking at what?
I think we're looking at the opp, the, the opportunity to add one and see how that impact, that delta, come back to the council and say, well, they said, you know, this is the amount of delta, and we come back and sort of say we've agreed that this is, and, and make a recommendation at the council at that time. But with the understanding that it's desired that we, if we can, we can get one there. I mean, and, and candidly, I mean, I've made, and, you know, not to let the cat out of the bag, but depending on city of Orange's finances, I've already had some preliminary discussions, saying, well, maybe it's a 50-50 deal, and maybe you guys, whatever. But, a lot depends on November 5th for them. So, they can't commit to anything. But I mean, there's, there's opportunities here that maybe we get it, and it comes in at no cost to us, or minimal cost, or a lot of cost. I don't know. I mean, I, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's a differential that Flock tells us. So that's a discussion item that we'll have.
Is this to negotiate with a primary vendor, getting back a contract that we would approve?
This is to negotiate with a primary vendor, and in the event that the negotiations are unsuccessful, given parameters that we've talked about, then I would negotiate with the secondary vendor, but definitely come back to the council for approval of that contract before anything. I don't sign off anything, I don't have authority to sign. At this point, it's the council would then come back and make a final decision.
Would you interest me in that?
I'd, I'd like to do it sooner or later, but I mean, it's gonna depend on how, how agreeable Flock is with some of the things I want to put in there, and that they're, you know, so I mean, I, you know, and negotiations are a process. I would like to think it's gonna be fairly quickly, but, and I think they're interested in making it quick, but I think they're interested in making it quick on their terms, not on our, you know, when we introduce our terms.
They've got some, they've got some fairly strong terms in there.
Yeah, so if we, we put, you know, it's a discussion. So I, I can't give you the best, my goal is to come back as rapidly as, I'd love to come back next council meeting, but I can't guarantee I will.
Okay.
Well, if there isn't a second, I'll second.
Can I add a friendly amendment to your proposal is, ask, I, I don't know whether this even works, is, again, I'm much more concerned is the budget. Can we, while city manager is negotiating, can we also have somewhat preliminary idea whether our budget next year, or actually this year, can afford it?
I, I think what we've done, if you look in our budget, there's a five-year projection, and each year in there, there's what, what ends up being a, what they call a fund balance, undesignated fund balance. Basically, every year for the next five years, we end with a positive number every year that we carry forward into future years. So, if you look at that number, there's, that number can sustain it, you know, but it does is reduce the following year. So, I mean, our, it's our challenge to see where we can minimize that delta. But based on that five-year projection, there's, there's money there, but it means that we have to tighten our screws here or something else, so that we don't impact the future years. So in other words, if, if we don't end up being in trouble in three or four years because we've spent, overspent in the first couple of years. So, but right now, if you were to look at the budget in our five-year projection, there is carry forward that sufficiently would allow for it. However, I mean, I think we, a lot depends on economic projections and things like that, that I, I wish, you know, if I knew that stuff really, you know, for sure, I could give you definite, but I can't tell you what it's gonna look like two years from now, you know, and, and we candidly, we, we have to guesstimate every spring what it's gonna be like to the following year, because they don't do the assessed valuation, the roll isn't come out until July every year. So we're, we're kind of speculating where the growth number is going to be when we talk about the property thing. So I, I can tell you that it's, it will be in the mix, and based on what I know today, we can do it. But that means that there might be, like I say, there might be some substitution in lieu of something else, we do this. But it's not, we're not going into deficit, and I certainly wouldn't recommend borrowing ever for something like an operational expense.
Okay. As far as the friendly amendment, it sounds like he's taking care of that, so we don't need that. Okay. I'm gonna go ahead and call the question now.
I had seconded if nobody had already, but I don't know if Mayor Protem did or not. Okay.
Okay. All right, everybody please vote now.
That passes 5-0.
Thank you. All right, moving on, item number eight, city manager report.
I, no, I, I, it's a monthly item, and you-
I'm doing one and two.
Pretty much, I, I'm gonna tell you how, how wide prices are going to be for this.
Totally agree. She crushed it.
She crushed it.
And since Anita did not take her from us, and we're very fortunate she's staying here, so-
Duly noted.
Huh? And we're lucky to have her, and I think, you know, the quality of what you see here is large part because of her efforts, and I think that, you know, and, and she's just starting to, her upward trend, if you will, so-
I will second that motion.
Great things ahead of us.
Again, in eight years, I've seen different people come and go. There's somebody I know I can always count on, and that's Ashley, and that's taking nothing away from the other folks that are part of staff now, but I, I can always count on her, and she's phenomenal, she's been a rock star. Taking stuff that candidly is filled with jargon, and making it pretty simplistic for a lot of folks that don't deal with the stuff on a daily basis. So, kudos to you. Well done. Thank you, Robbie. I appreciate that. Councilman Pitts, excuse me. Next up, Mayor and Councilmember Matters, Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District.
So, again, I want to just say thank you to the district for our, our award, but really it goes to a collaborative effort, and well-deserved. And there's, whenever, we won it two years ago, and then this year, so hopefully we'll win again next year. But every time-
There's a reason I will not-
Wow. Wow. That's not exactly...
So, um, next, next summer's campaign, I'll let you know what happens. But as we move into fall, the district continues to see a reduction in West Nile virus activity and with the mosquitoes that transmit West Nile virus. And it's so cold in this room, I doubt anything would survive. It is cold, I am freezing up here. Yeah, it's freezing.
It's okay.
However, when I come down with pneumonia, and I'm not here next month. However, the cooler weather is not impacting travel-related dinghy cases in Orange County in the 80s egypti mosquito counts. So Orange County Mosquito Vector Control West Nile Virus Activity year-to-date includes 48 positive mosquito pools, one positive dead bird, but no human cases, which is really good. That SIT, or the sterile insect technique team, is preparing for a double multi-point mark release recapture. So if you remember last month, at a 200 square block radius, they released a whole bunch of the male mosquitoes, sterile mosquitoes. And so they're going to do a recapture, which will be really interesting to see the data on that. Hopefully, they need to have something like a 70 or 80% survival rate for those, for those mosquitoes in order for the program to work. This will be the third study this, this season, which will examine the longevity and dispersal of the sterile male 80s egypti that have been irradiated. And then we do continue to see higher-than-average numbers of the 80s mosquitoes and have investigated a total of 38 travel-related dinghy cases this year. In October, investigations resulted in nine nights of large-area truck treatments and 256 homes inspected in those areas to identify potential sources. Los Angeles County and San Diego County both have locally acquired dinghy cases, and so it's still very much an issue. But as far as West Nile virus in Villa Park, we're good. So that's it, that's my report.
I appreciate that, as somebody who went to a local high school in Anaheim not too long ago and left with five bug bites within 15 minutes.
Anaheim's not one of the better cities.
And they were, they were definitely mosquitoes, so thank you. Moving on to Orange County Sanitation District, Councilman Pitts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the board meeting last month, and finance team reviewed the capital improvement plan, the long-term and the short-term. You know, the plan is to rehabilitate, replace, and improve the infrastructure and facilities. I don't know if you all know this or not, but OC Sand infrastructure includes 390 miles of regional sewer pipes, 15 pump stations, and two reclamation centers. In the past fiscal year, they've spent $262.3 million on various projects that allow OC Sand to continue to meet the mission of protecting public health and the environment. And over the next 10 years, we project to spend $3.25 billion on improvements in the, in the plan. Also, I want to report that on Friday, October 25th, from 11:00 to 1:00, OC Sand is sponsoring a luncheon, which I think all of you have been invited to. And we'll, we'll get the state of the OC at that point in time. So that was my report. I don't know, Councilman Wu, you went to, was there anything from the admin committee?
They just show populations, different subgroup. You know...
Usually not a whole lot to report.
Yeah, I was going to say not a whole lot for Villa Park, so that's why, probably no report.
Well, thank you for doing that, I appreciate that.
That's, that's my report. Thank you. I attended last month's meeting of the Orange County Fire Authority, general, I should say, executive and general board meeting, and very light budget, a few items of note. These are just numbers that I'm going to throw out there that probably don't mean much to folks, but they're very big numbers. Approval of adjustments fiscal year 2024, 2025. General Fund 121 to adjust revenues by $21 million and expenditures by $22 million. And then there are several other items, one through seven, that basically are, it's taking money from one year and carrying it over to the next in large part due to contracts and capital improvements that have not been fulfilled because of this, that, or whatever reason. One item of particular note that is important is the actual roof of the RFOTC Regional Fire Operations and Training Center is desperately in need of repairs, and that contract was $2.751 million. And they're going to get a new roof. It's been leaking, which is kind of frightening when you consider how much sensitive data, dispatching equipment is all under that roof. So most of the meeting dealt with contractual issues. One of, I can't talk about specifics, but one dealt with the chief's review. Another one dealt with some cleanups on some items that Local 3631 requested and some other, other issues. But long meeting for a whole lot of closed-session stuff. So whoever gets to fulfill that in the future, stand by to stand by. That's all I have for Fire Authority. Our next meeting will be this Thursday evening, and Orange County Library Advisory Board's next. Okay. Orange Unified School District, City Schools.
We didn't have a meeting. However, I would like to share that we had another e-bike safety meeting at Villa Park High School last month, and there will be another one for students this Thursday. I met with Deputy McDermott to fine-tune our educational presentation for our students, and I really appreciate his willingness to collaborate with council. Thank you again to our partners at the Orange County Sheriff's Department, OUSD, because these programs have been very well received by both students and parents. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Law Enforcement Advisory, we'll kind of tag-team this if you want to add anything. The lion's share of the meeting dealt with LPRs. They're minor topics, not minor as importance to our residents, but we did touch loosely on e-bikes and some other matters, but the lion's share of the meeting dealt with that. And that's basically the extent of my notes and our conversation. I think we've already beat that one to death this evening. So without further ado, I'll move on to Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
Yes, so we had no meeting, but we do have a meeting tomorrow evening. I feel that the candidates forum was a big success. Each candidate got the opportunity to present their involvement with the city, and we got to hear their vision for the future of Villa Park. And then just a reminder that the City of Villa Park Halloween Fest is this Saturday, October 26th. So bring your kids out for a great evening of costumes and trick-or-treating.
Thank you very much. Housing Legislative Committee.
No meeting.
Bridges at Kramer.
Meetings tomorrow.
Orange County Older Adults Advisory Commission, easy for me to say.
Thank you. So we met on October 11th, and we had a presentation about early intervention services for older adults from the Orange County Healthcare Agency. I believe we put the information in the feeder, and it's still there. But it's basically, the Orange County Healthcare Agency is trying to get in the front of aging for older adults and recognizing those early, I guess, signs. And the program, Early Intervention Services for Older Adults, it targets adults 60 years of age and older who are experiencing the early onset of mental health conditions or those who are at an increased risk of developing mental health conditions. The program reaches out to unserved or underserved older adults who can be isolated due to social, cultural, and/or linguistic barriers. And the county provides these services at no cost. So it's really about preventing the onset of a lot of these mental health, behavioral health issues, and really recommend anyone that has an older adult that they're concerned about, go to the website, which is a long acronym, but it's basically OCM as in Michael ECCA.org, and then slash programs slash services. And if you just go to the Orange County Healthcare Agency and look up preventative services, it'll come up that way as well. And then a little update on, we have been, the chair and I have been going, and we finished to the last supervisor, Supervisor Foley, to discuss about making Orange County an age-friendly county. And I have to say that we've had a very good reception from all the supervisors. And in fact, we did a big ask for all of them, which was to budget or to direct their staff to come up with a budget so that we could do some mass marketing education campaign for all the different programs on Office on Aging, or Workforce, or Veteran Services. And the problem is, is, in a nutshell, because we don't have just one area like Social Services Administration that controls the Office on Aging, or Orange County Community Resources that controls it, it's kind of split all over the place. So what we did is we asked the supervisors to please direct staff to come up with a budget so that we can do this mass education and marketing campaign, because there's a lot of people, something like 40% of Orange County residents do not even know about all the different services that Office on Aging provides. And so at, not this, yesterday's meeting, but the meeting before that, Supervisor Wagner did in fact direct staff to come up with that, so that's a good win for us. So that way we can start going through the motion of, to get accredited as a county that is an age-friendly county. And this coming, not this Friday, but the next Friday, the 20, what is it? What is, not this Friday, but the next Friday, sorry. There's a meeting, and we're going to hear from Dr. Laura Trejo, who took LA County and turned it around and made it one of the competitive age-friendly counties. So we're going to get to hear how she did that, so. All of us are getting there, we're all going to age, so we all need to get there. But anyways, that's it.
Well, I, I mean, I know it's really late, and I normally don't labor comments at this hour of the evening after a long meeting. But I want to underscore how important that is. I mean, we have people within our own community that are really struggling with mental health issues, people that are giving money to people that they should not be giving money to. We have adult children that are in their 30s and 40s that are chronic mental health consumers, that their parents who are in their, you know, late 60s, early 70s, and even 80s really are struggling to care for. So I, that is so incredibly important. I think it's really critical that we get as much of that out there on our website, the feeder, and as much information there as possible. So I'm sorry to take a moment, but that is so important, and I've seen it a lot recently, both professionally and then politically here within the city. So thank you, and let's please make sure we get that over to Ashley and company. Councilman Wu? I think you are up for council member comments, because that's about it. We're done.
Okay, you just threw me off, I might wait.
I'm just starting over there and working this way.
All right, no problem. This month, I have attended the celebrate, or anniversary for Women's League, so that was a wonderful event I attended. Besides the Halloween Fest promo for this Saturday, I also want to encourage Villa Park residents, adopt Marines, Marine Thanksgiving, that's coming up. Huge thanks to Robert Fraqueton and his friends started 20 years ago. So this year is the 20-years anniversary for adopting Marines. Robert Fraqueton has continued to work countlessly time with Camp Pendleton that we will adopt a total of 60 Marines. So please, open your home, that's, welcome those Marines to our home. If you feel you don't have the, you don't want to host them, feel free to donate also. So allow another family to host them if they don't have the financial means to do so. The website is on the city website, so please keep that in mind. When you think about Thanksgiving, think about those newly finished boot camp young men and women. They would like to come to our homes and celebrate Thanksgiving with you. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Miles?
Really look forward to the Halloween Fest, and Councilman Wu brought with the word Thanksgiving. So I think that we had put it in the feeder, but there's a family that for the past two or three years organizes a Thanksgiving dinner, and I believe they are doing it again, not at the same location off of Pamela, I forget the name of the street, but I think that she is still accepting donations. And Steve, can we put, is, do you remember the deadline for the donations for the Fraziers? I think it's Elizabeth Fraser does that, and it was in the feeder. If we could maybe put that back in again, if it's, if it hasn't passed the deadline for the, she's asking for like massive boxes of mashed potatoes and stuffing, and it's really great. They make, they home-make the whole meal for individuals that don't have anywhere to go. So it's a lovely gesture, and I guess we won't, yeah, we will, we'll see everyone before Thanksgiving. So I won't say anything like that, so that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
So I also had a lot of fun at the Villa Park Women's League 55th Anniversary Celebration, which was held on the same day and the same location as the very first meeting 55 years ago. So that was a lot of fun. And then I also attended the OCFA Open House at our local Station 23. They had a wonderful turnout of families that were having fun climbing on the fire truck and looking at everything at the station, and it was wonderful to hear about the improvements coming to our local Station 23. They're going to be starting a major remodel of that facility and building it out a little bit. So it was great to hear about all the changes that are in store for our local station. And that's my report.
Yeah, that took some serious arm bending, but hopefully it gets done eventually. Councilman Pitts, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I too had the pleasure of attending the 55th Annual Women's League Meeting Anniversary. And I also co-presented a plaque that showcases all of the Villa Park Women's League presidents that I believe will be hung here in City Hall. It's already here? Okay. That was a real honor for me to be able to stand up and, and present that along with Sherri Zakowicz, who was the very first president. And so she, she had, it was an amazing evening with her, being able to see her and, and talk to her about what's going on, what's been going on in the city since the day that Women's League started. So it was an honor for me to be able to do that and thank, thank the Women's League for allowing me to do that.
That's it. I just want to say thank you all for attending. Thank you for giving us your time and sharing your kindness and your words of wisdom and your opinions. Everybody's opinion matters, whether you agree or disagree with us. And everybody be safe, happy and healthy, and have a happy Halloween. Come to Halloween Fest. We're adjourned.